Good afternoon. I now call this meeting of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment to order. My name is Ron Bonatouche, in the MLA for the Deadshow, and Deputy Chair of this committee. Our first order of business is to open our meeting with a prayer. I will conduct a prayer myself. Massey Creator, we ask for your blessing and guidance to have good thoughts, to see good things in a person, to hear good things from a person, to talk good to a person, so that we can walk with others in a good way. Massey Creator. Our next item is the review and adoption of the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a number of public matters on the agenda today. Committee will receive a technical briefing from the Department of Finance on the GNWT and the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission. Following that, committee will be hearing from Cutlautech Communications, SSI Canada, New North Networks, and then committee will proceed in camera for a wrap-up at the end of the day.
Let's see, Mr. Clerk, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, Ms. Nakleby? Motion is in order, all those in favor, the motion is carried. Having reviewed and adopted the agenda, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Hearing none. The Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment has identified digital connectivity as one of its three priorities for the 19th Legislative Assembly. This priority is consistent with the CRTC's current review of the availability, quality, reliability of phone and internet services in the north. To understand what is happening across the Northwest Territories, committee is receiving four public briefings regarding the state of telecommunications in the north. Committee will first hear from the Government of Northwest Territories, Department of Finance, on the GNWT role in relation to the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission. Following that, committee will hear from key industry players, including Lyle Fabian, President of Cutlautech Communications, Jeffrey Phillip, founder and CEO of SSI Canada, and Tom Zubko, President and Founder of New North Networks. Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment will be hearing from Northwest Tel on a later day, and a public notice will be provided of that meeting. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on the Assembly's social media channels, and presentation materials will be available on the Legislative Assembly's website after the meeting has concluded. To respect physical distancing requirements, all witnesses will be attending by video conference. I'd like to remind all members and our witnesses that all comments, questions, and remarks will need to be directed to myself as the chair. Both members and the witnesses will need to wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record, starting on my left.
Katrina Nakleby, MLA for Great Slave.
Valen Johnson, MLA for Yellowknife North.
Kevin Horriley, Frame Lake.
Jackie Jacobson, MLA in Nookwood.
Jackson Lafferty, Member for Moffey.
Other staff.
Amy Lazott, Sketty Advisor.
Glenn Rutland, Committee Clerk.
Jerry Burla, Committee Clerk.
James Thomas, Committee Clerk.
Massey members, firstly, we will begin with the Government of the Northwest Territories, Department of Finance, to introduce their staff and presenter to proceed with the opening remarks. Minister Boznak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Ministers, Mr. Kelgitar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present a technical briefing on the CRTC. The GNWT is historically our role in its proceedings over the years. With me today, I have Rick Wynn, Department of Finance's Chief Information Officer, Susan Martin, the Finance's policy regulatory analyst, and on the phone, I believe, is Miss Oliver, who is the Department's regulatory consultant with all our CRTC proceedings. We do have a fairly lengthy presentation that's quite technical, so what I will do right now, and so we need more time for questions at the end, is turn the mic over to Mr. Wynn, who will take the committee to the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Mr. Kelgitar, you may proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to be here today to discuss the CRTC with committee. In response to the letter, we've pulled together information that will help explain the role of the Commission and our relationship with it. We also have a bit of a history on the regulation of telecommunications in the NWT, and then some information on items that are currently before the Commission, including a recent tariff notification by Northwest Tel and an upcoming regulatory review. Slide three, please. The Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunication Committee is an administrative tribunal that operates at arms-length from the federal government. While they do report to Parliament through the Minister of Heritage, they don't function as a department, and as a result, our interactions with them are typically through structured activities or proceedings. The CRTC implements the laws and regulations set by Parliament and the policies set by the Government of Canada Departments. They regulate and supervise broadcasting and telecommunications in the public interest. Their mission, as stated on their website, is to ensure that Canadians have access to world-class communications systems that promotes innovation and enriches their lives. They promote compliance with the unsolicited telecommunication rules, including the national do-not-call list and the Canadian anti-spam legislation. They also approve tariffs and certain agreements for the telecommunications sector, particularly wholesale rates for major telco and cable providers in the country. The CRTC encourages competition in telecommunications markets to ensure that Canadians have a choice of innovative and affordable solutions. Near Mallard-Nedu is the CRTC Commissioner responsible for representing Alberta and the Northwest Territories. Slide four. Thank you. The CRTC is governed in part by the Telecommunications Act. Section seven of the Act establishes the policy objectives and guides CRTC decision-making. While the goals on the slide are important to Canadians, the highlighted ones show clear alignment with the need to address challenges and concerns here in the NWT: enriching and strengthening social and economic fabric of Canada and its regions; reliable and affordable telecommunications services to urban and rural areas in all regions of the country; efficiency and competitiveness of Canadian telecommunications nationally and internationally; the ability to respond to the economic and social needs of users, and of course, to contribute to the protection of privacy. The Act was updated in March of 2019, and during the legislative review, the GNWT restated our position on affordability and highlighted our commitment to broadband through our investment in the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Line. At the time, the GNWT also supported a special recognition of Indigenous communities in the Telecommunication Act. Next slide, please. In 2013, the CRTC recognized the unique characteristics of the north, including a large geographic area, sparse and dispersed population, and limited opportunities for competition relative to other parts of the country. They decided at that time to regulate Northwest Tel's internet rates to ensure fairness. While most provinces still suffer from telecommunications service challenges in rural and remote locations, they typically have large urban centers that provide opportunities for economy of scale that simply don't exist across the north. Southern communities usually have roads as well, which simplifies the installation of infrastructure. Northwest Tel remains the only internet service provider whose retail rates are regulated. In other parts of the country, market factors determine pricing. Next slide. The GNWT's overall objective has consistently been that northerners should have access to a similar range of services of similar quality and at similar prices as all other Canadians. The GNWT works to develop positions that ensure the NWT residents receive a comparable range of services at comparable rates and qualities, while at the same time being representative of the unique needs of northern Canada. In this context, key issues addressed have included: ensuring that competition and the provision of all telecommunications services is encouraged in the north and that competitors are allowed to compete on fair terms; ensuring that key service rates, including those for local telephone, internet, and competitor services, are reasonable and affordable; encouraging the provision throughout the NWT of enhanced calling features and improved wireless and internet services; ensuring that Northwest Tel develops a network in a manner that allows it to adequately meet user needs; and fostering the development and continuation of nationwide subsidies necessary to achieve these objectives. Next slide. As I mentioned previously, our relationship with the CRTC is very formal. The GNWT is an intervenor or a participant in CRTC proceedings. Sometimes, we're a bit of a minor participant in national proceedings, but we are an important voice in proceedings dealing specifically with the north. Telecommunication regulations and proceedings relate to both telephone service and data service, which would include internet services. In the matters involving the CRTC, the GNWT position must be in the best interest of all northern stakeholders and take a balanced approach when considering the matters under review to ensure the greatest public good. This may result in a GNWT position at times that advocates for greater good that may be perceived as contrary to the interests of certain stakeholders. The GNWT has opened the input from third parties such as Northwest Tel and SSI Canada and other telecommunications operators in Northwest Territories. We also take steps to try to inform northerners about proceedings that may impact them. Telecommunication issues relevant to the north occur on a frequent basis. Any interested party is free to make submissions to the CRTC to advance their own views. The GNWT, as an intervenor, has a positive track record with the CRTC, and they have agreed with many of our positions over the years. The GNWT also communicates with the CRTC Commissioner for the NWT in Alberta in order to keep her informed about what the NWT is saying about broadband and other matters, including discussions that may occur at the Legislative Assembly. Next slide, please. Over the past 25 years or so, there have been 15 major regulatory proceedings that have occurred in the Northwest Territories. The scope of technology and service offerings have evolved over the years from telephone service to where we are today with a primary focus on broadband and digital connectivity, but the challenges have always been consistent, it seems: affordability, the need for subsidy, the need for competition, and the need to ensure quality of service. The complexities inherent in delivering telecommunications services seem to continue to exist across the Northwest Territories. Next slide. In 1993, the GNWT hired a regulatory consultant to assist in the preparation of arguments related to telephone service, a practice we continue to this day, although the scope has changed significantly over the years. Also in 1993, the CRTC agreed with the GNWT that there were a large number of quality and service programs but problems in the north, and adopted GNWT recommendations required Northwest Tel to report all community service averages. Northwest Tel has to produce these reports quarterly for CRTC review, and if they don't meet certain metrics, then the CRTC Commission fines. The CRTC directed Northwest Tel this service extension plan for seven communities in the NWT by June of 1994. These were communities that didn't even have telephone service at the time, basic telephone service at the time. Following the comments from GNWT and others, this plan was approved in 1995, and the implementation occurred over the following three years. Next slide. On affordability, in 1996, the CRTC identified service to high-cost areas, including the extension of services including the extension of services and upgrading of existing services, as an important issue to be addressed. A major proceeding was subsequently held in 98 and 99, which included eight regional hearings across Canada. A large part of the resulting decision was devoted to specific problems in the North, and the decision represents a real high-water mark for regulation in northern telecommunications. In 1999, Northwest Tel received a high-cost service area designation, recognizing the unique challenges associated with delivering telecommunications at the time here in the Northwest Territories. Basic service at the time was identified as an individual landline service with a touch-tone dialing, enhanced calling features, including access to emergency services, a voice message relay service, and privacy protection features; access to operator and directory assistance services; access to a long-distance network; and a copy of the current local telephone directory. In 1999, Northwest Tel, as an incumbent carrier in the North, was determined to have an obligation to serve. They are expected and remain expected to make basic telephone service available at a reasonable price without undue discrimination to anyone requiring that service in their service area. In 2000, Northwest Tel received its first subsidy from the National Contribution Fund for its Service Improvement Plan and local service subsidy that has, over the years, amounted to approximately $20 million a year up until 2018. In total, about $300 million had been provided by southern telcos through the CRTC to improve service in the North. In 2018, the CRTC has established a three-year phase-out program of local subsidy as part of their renewed priority around broadband and the decision to redirect funds into broadband funding programs. Next slide. On competition, the GNWT has long been, had an active position to encourage competition, and now competition is permitted on all telecommunications services across the North, although Northwest Tel maintains a dominant position in the marketplace. The economies of service provision can make it challenging for new entries to enter into the market. While the GNWT has generally taken the position that competitors are best equipped to raise specific requirements before the CRTC, we have taken positions on a number of specific issues, including supporting the introduction of regulation of wholesale connector wholesale costs and the provision of third-party internet access for cable network providers. The GNWT also successfully argued that Northwest Tel should absorb its own local competition cost. The GNWT, however, was unsuccessful in the same proceeding in convincing the CRTC to allow competitors access to the residential local service subsidy. Next slide. Related to the regulatory framework, in 2000, Northwest Tel Quality of Service Standards for Clear Trouble Tickets in Remote Areas was changed to allow for 90% of troubles or issues in remote communities to be cleared within five days. The company, as mentioned previously, has to provide quarterly service reports to CRTC, and failure to comply with those service levels can result in fines. In 2007, Northwest Tel's regulatory approach was changed from a regulating rate of return or profit into a price cap approach, which structures services into different baskets, which are then regulated accordingly independently. This approach is closer to the way telephone companies are regulated in southern Canada. Also, in 2007, the CRTC decided that 911 service was not part of the basic obligation to serve, which could be argued contributed to delayed implementation of 911 service here in the NWT. In 2011, CRTC ruled that Northwest Tel price cap framework should continue, but that network modernization was required, and Northwest Tel was required to file a modernization plan. Next slide, please. Northwest Tel's modernization plan was to address communication infrastructure issues, including service quality and increased availability of new services, including enhanced calling features, internet, and broadband wireless, and the need to replace their aging infrastructure. The resulting upgrades over the next few years transformed the network infrastructure available in the NWT, opening up the opportunities to deliver high-speed internet and wireless and preparing the organization to respond to broadband demands we feel today. By 2018, all communities in the Northwest Territories had access to 4G mobile service within their communities. Next slide, please. More specific to relate this to internet service, since the 1990s, when internet services really emerged, the CRTC had declined to regulate any rates for internet service, including those offered by Northwest Tel. In the 2011 basic service proceeding, the GNWT argued that there was inadequate availability of high-speed internet services in the North and that prices for internet services offered were excessive and should be lower. We later went on to specifically request the CRTC begin to regulate internet services in the North, and that subsidy financing should be provided to allow for the extension of higher-speed services in northern communities served by satellite. In 2013, the CRTC agreed that it would regulate rates for Northwest Tel internet services in terrestrial-served communities and directed Northwest Tel to file tariffs for its approval. Since that time, Northwest Tel retail internet rates have been regulated by the CRTC. In 2016, the CRTC introduced a universal service objective, which established our speeds of 50 megabits per second down and 10 megabits per second up, which should be available to Canadians across the country, including rural and remote locations. In 2019, the CRTC established the Broadband Fund, $750 million fund to extend broadband infrastructure and to meet the universal standard of 510. Round one applications for funding under the CRTC Broadband Fund were made last year and were limited to the three northern territories. Northwest Tel submitted a round one application, which will result in the majority of communities in the Torroco Territory receiving 510 service over the next three years. Next slide. There are, as I mentioned, there are a couple of proceedings underway, or a couple of issues before CRTC that are underway right now, today, one of which is a tariff presented, submitted by Northwest Tel, which would allow them to introduce unlimited internet packages in the four communities in the Northwest Territories that are served by cable internet. That would be Yellonay, Faber, Fort Smith, and Norman Wells. SSI Canada has raised concerns with these tariffs and makes a strong argument that without adjustments to wholesale costs, the introduction of these new retail services puts some added disadvantage in the market. The GNWT's position is that these packages are critical to residents of the NWT and should be available as soon as technically feasible. However, we continue to support and emphasize the need for competition to be viable in the NWT. The CRTC has granted interim approval, and these packages are available to consumers now, although the filing options for filing is still open as we'll close the business today, and I'm sure that they will continue to get it. Next slides. In certain rural and remote areas of Canada, such as within Northwest Tel's operating territory, the cost to provide residential local voice services exceeds the price customers pay. As a result, pursuant to Section 46.5 I of the Act, the Commission required certain technology service providers to contribute to a fund to support continued access by Canadians to basic telecommunications services. That local service subsidy regime was established to subsidize provision of residential local voice services in all high-cost service areas across Canada. The Commission found it is likely that the elimination of the local service subsidy I mentioned earlier will ultimately result in a material shortfall for Northwest Tel, potentially resulting in rates that are no longer just and reasonable for Northwest Tel's residential local voice services. As a result, the Commission indicated its intent to launch a more fulsome review specific to Northwest Tel prior to the complete phase-out of the subsidy in order to consider the appropriate regulatory approach to address the situation. That regulatory proceeding is CRTC TNC 2020-367. In light of the breadth of issues associated with telecommunications services in the North, the Commission has initiated a review of its regulatory framework for Northwest Tel. The Commission intends to identify issues within its existing regulatory framework for Northwest Tel and put forward solutions with a view of implementing telecommunication policy objectives set out in Section seven of the Telecommunications Act. Anticipated issues include consideration of the price cap and local service subsidy regimes; regulation of satellite retail internet services; network improvement; competition in wholesale services used by competitors; and the affordability of telecommunications services for Canadians living in the North. Previously, the proceedings such as this one that is starting, has recently started from the CRTC can be quite, can take quite some time. We are currently anticipating that this regulatory proceeding may take up to two years, during which time the GNWT will be active in the process, asking questions, feeling inquiries, and contributing information. The deadlines that we are aware of today relate to the initial call for public input, which closes on January 20th, and the CRTC reply, which we expect on March 24th. The reply will set up future activities and timeframes for the review, including the potential need for public hearings. Next slide. Pardon me, next slide. Thank you. The CRTC is consulting on an unprecedented level. It's important that northern voices are heard. The CRTC has said they are seeking to better understand the state of telephone, wireless, and internet services. It's important to understand that basic telephone service is part of this regulatory proceeding as well, although a lot of the conversation seems to be around internet. The CRTC believes this will help determine whether more needs to be done to ensure Canadians living in the North have access to high-quality services at reasonable rates. The survey will help the Commission assess Northwest Tel's quality of services, affordability, and how to promote competition in the North's telecommunications market. The GNWT is actively encouraging Northerners to participate in the survey. Public messaging should start to be released in the coming days. As the word on the slide indicates, internet service is the dominant discussion topic that's been identified by people who already contributed their views through the public forum. We want to ensure other telecommunications services remain to be considered as well. Next slide. The GNWT is still formulating its position, its formal position, in response to this proceeding. However, we anticipate that, as traditionally, we will be focusing on affordability, quality of service, and competition. The CRTC has decided to phase out the local rate subsidy over a three-year period. That subsidy makes NWT landlines cheaper. As a result of that lost revenue, that subsidy, Northwest Tel may be faced with addressing that revenue gap. While the GNWT respects that Northwest Tel may need to at least partially replace that lost revenue as a result of the lost subsidies, and it supports a reasonable local rate increase, we need to think, we think that the ones presented may be excessive. We also suggest a cap on rate increases on any service, on any service increase in any year. The GNWT also remains concerned about the discrepancy in cost for internet services and will be addressing internet affordability within our submissions to the CRTC. These positions are in keeping with the GNWT position over time, that internet and telecom rates are too high in the North. Issues of service resiliency remain a concern of the GNWT. This was reinforced during major outages experienced during the summer that affected telephone and internet service access across the Northwest Territories, particularly the capital. Phone and internet are essential services today, and resiliency of that network is critical. Also related to resiliency is service reliability and the assurance that consumers are receiving the service performance they are paying for. And of course, the GNWT continues to support competition in the North, including variable cell rates and access to underlying infrastructure similar to models enjoyed in southern Canada. Slide. We've provided a series of links in the deck if people are interested in more information on the CRTC and some of the past history, and invite people to take a look at that information as they have time. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you very much.
Let's see, for the presentation, Mr. Lynn. I will open the floor to committee for any questions, comments. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. And in large part, I'm in agreement with the GNWT submissions, especially the part about making sure that wholesalers have fair access and that there is access to any infrastructure that Northwest Tel ultimately gets subsidized to build. I want to speak briefly about the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link, which is infrastructure that we, in fact, own. And I guess my understanding of the rate that Northwest Tel and other providers pay to access the Fiber Link is a little missing. What do we charge internet service providers to access the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link? And is there anything preventing us from simply lowering the current charges that they pay us? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't have the details on the rates that we charge the individual ISPs with me right now, so I could commit to providing that to me. But what I do know is we do charge the access to our point of presence at rates that are fairly lower than what Northwest Tel will charge. It's a better...
Let's see, Mr. Calgutar. Follow-up, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is we own this Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link. I mean, I doubt we're ever going to charge enough money to pay for it, and you know, it was initially subsidized by the federal government, so that's fine. But I, and I understand, obviously, we're going to sell a wholesale rate much cheaper than an ISP would sell to their customers. They need to make enough profit to exist. But from what I'm hearing of the ISPs and individuals is that there's, there doesn't seem to be much logic in the rate we're charging. I don't, I guess, is our goal to break even on the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link? Or what's preventing us, as the owner of this infrastructure, simply lowering the rate of internet costs? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the main purpose of the rate that we charge is to try to recover at least our base costs. We're certainly not in it to earn a profit. Yeah, I can certainly go back and look at the rates. I know we had some discussions with the CRTC on them because we didn't want to get regulated by the CRTC if we hit a certain threshold, I believe. But what I could commit to doing is taking a look at how those rates were determined and getting that information back to me.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutar. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I could, I have lots of questions on this. I'd like to switch to how much money that, I understand the CRTC gives Northwest Tel quite a lot of money, and there's a very complex regulatory framework, and there's the price cap framework. But I'm curious how much the GNWT pays Northwest Tel annually, and whether that's in subsidies for infrastructure or whether just the total cost for us as a government accessing internet and phone services. Do we have the total figure that we pay Northwest Tel each year? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutar.
Maybe I'll turn to Mr. Lynn on this one.
All right, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have the detailed figures in front of me that would speak to what the total cost the GNWT incurs as a result of services advised from Northwest Tel. I will say that we are a service consumer at Northwest Tel, so the services we do buy are established through contracts and competitive rates that they offer and things like that. We don't, that I'm aware of, we don't have a subsidy program in which we subsidize Northwest Tel's operating costs. We simply purchase services from them through our service contracts. But I'd be more than happy to come back and return to committee or provide to committee an overview of our actual Northwest Tel costs on an annual basis.
Let's see, Mr. Lynn, we look forward to that bit of information. I'll go on to the next, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just would like to pick up where my colleague from Yellonay North left off. I just want to be really clear then, so GNWT has not provided subsidies to Northwest Tel in the past in terms of capital or ongoing operations. We're just a service consumer, is that what I heard? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutar. Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, thanks for that information. I'm just wondering, I think I heard that we do have a consultant in place now that gives advice to our government and may intervene on our behalf before the CRTC. Can you tell me who that is and how they were selected and just a ballpark figure of how much we spend each year on that service? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the person that provides us with the regulatory advice is Mr. Agnes Oliver. He's on the phone, I believe, right now. I believe we entered into a relationship with Mr. Oliver back in 2003.
1993.
1993. Mr. Oliver was a previous director of the CRTC, so we felt that he was, yes, obviously best placed to provide that advice in terms of how much it costs us annually for that advice. So we turn to Mr. Wind.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Calgutkar was going to ask Mr. Wind to give us the ballpark figure of what the expertise costs us per year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That costs us about $90,000 a year.
Let's see for that information, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm just, I know that I've raised this in the House before and I've raised this publicly as well. Is there actually a plan to sort of complete access to high-speed affordable internet across the Northwest Territories? And if so, is that something we develop or is it something that Northwest Tel is supposed to develop or CRTC or who? I'll start with that. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we, we did hear a lot about this during the last session, so I had instructed staff to start costing what it would cost to ensure that we have complete coverage across the North. And we do have a few products that we're, that are under development right now. As, as members will know, we are looking at expanding the Mackenzie Valley Fiber from, from Anuvik to Tuck. We are also working on the Wattie Fiber with the Canadian Government, so the Department of Finance is providing the technical expertise to help the Canadian Government advance that project. And we have entered into an MOU to, to help them with that and help pay for some of the development costs related to that. And in addition, we also are going to develop some costing on expanding the fiber from Wattie to the, to other communities as well. This is more of a desktop exercise, but we are trying to get a order of magnitude of what this cost would look like. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm interested to know when that, even at a high level, the plan might be available. And I guess the reason why I'm asking this is, look, I think if there was one big infrastructure project that we need to take to Ottawa, it's that. We got to finish the network of providing affordable, high-speed internet for all of our communities. And I think the federal, it's something that the federal government's prepared to invest in probably more than some of the other projects that have been pitched. But what work generally are we doing to get that plan together and then get, take it to Ottawa and obtain funding to complete the network here in the Northwest Territories? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So right now the focus is on making sure we are ready to submit the application under the Rapid Stream, the Universal Broadband Fund for the Wattie project, so a lot of our focus is on that. And then the, we also are going to be hiring some expertise to do some of the costing beyond Wattie as well. The department does seem to have a bit of expertise in this, this field, but we are going to have to look at some outside experts to help us, help us more broadly as well. The other project that we are also working on with the Yukon Government is the C N, McKinney and North Fiber Link project, which is a project out of Amster. So the other priority for us is also looking at redundancy, as Mr. Wind said in his presentation. Redundancy is a big concern for us and, and making sure we have a complete fiber link for the North should be, also be a priority for this government.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Ms. Knocelby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My colleague asked some of my questions about the consultants. I'm assuming because after 27 years of having a consulting contract, that's pretty impressive in the consulting world, assuming we're looking to get a new consultant because are you retiring, Mr. Oliver? Is that the case?
Let's see, Ms. Knocelby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I am indeed retiring and a, our P is currently in place to find a replacement consultant.
Let's see, Mr. Oliver, Ms. Knocelby.
Thank you. So I guess my question then is, when I hear we're spending $90,000 a year on outside expertise, and I'm assuming Mr. Oliver is not in the Northwest Territories, that he's elsewhere, so I'm asking, is the department have any intentions or plans to look at bringing that expertise in-house or using some of that money instead to train Northerners to do this work instead of looking for another outside consultant? And maybe further to that, you could explain why we are lacking the expertise in-house then if we can't, can't grow it here. Thanks.
Let's see, Ms. Knocelby, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as Mr. Oliver said, we have issued an R P to try to get that service. I believe it closes, it's, it's closed last weekend. The two proponents that have submitted to it are from, from Southern Canada. Mr., Ms. Martin is the, is the person that department has as the regulator, or that works in the regulatory environment and we're hoping that as, as she'll be able to take, take up more of this work and be mentored by the consultant that we are. Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Ms. Knocelby.
Sounds good, so I'm glad to hear that the succession planning is to bring that, that expertise in-house and I strongly encourage that to, to be continued on. I just wanted to come back to the, I just want first to thank our staff for a great research note here, but it looks like we couldn't find any of these CRTC submissions from the GNWT on the website or they're not really easily available. Could the, the department commit to giving us a summary of the submissions to the CRTC over the years and any of the proceedings that may have come out as a result from them intervening? Thank you.
Let's see, Ms. Knocelby, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree with a member on that because when I went back to look at some of the ones, I couldn't find them here. So we will prepare a summary for, for the committee. Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, we look forward to that. Ms. Knocelby.
Just going to shift gears over a little bit and maybe you could give us a bit more of an update on the Anuvik to Tuck Fiber Link? Thank you.
Let's see, Ms. Knocelby, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's, there's two things going on right now with, with, with that project is we're, we're working with the federal government to secure seventy-five, to secure seventy-five percent share of the funding for that project. But in the meantime, we have started to engage the, the GTC on the environmental work that will need to go into that project in terms of where the, where the line is going to be laid. We're anticipating that it's going to be fairly, I'm not, I'm obviously not a regulatory expert, but we're, we're hoping that it's going to be a fairly straight, forward, forward project because in, in the Anuvik Tuck Highway design, I believe there is a conduit that is provided to lay future fibers, so we're hoping to access that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Ms. Knocelby.
Have you had any inspection lately or sort of follow-up to see how, what state that conduct or conduit may be in considering parts of the highway are quite flattened? Thank you.
Let's see, Ms. Knocelby, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I have not, no, I, I certainly will now.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar. Mr. Jacobson, did you have a question?
Oh, just a clarification, Mr. Chair. He's, he said GTC, it's IRC here. So verification on that and thank you.
All right, let's see for that, Mr. Jacobson. Seeing no further questions. I'd like to note that from our research staff that we have lots of unconnected homes that, that don't have quality internet, home internet that they show at 43%, clean show at 41%. The communities also, there's Sambak A, formerly Trout Lake, G Mary River, Fort Yar, Fort McPherson, probably goes on and on, Siget Check, all, a lot of the small communities. I'm wondering if the GNWT has or can provide a map of all the telecommunications infrastructure across the Northwest Territories and their service providers. So, so everybody, we have a clear picture of what is out there because apparently we don't have any now because the Mackenzie Fiber, the line only follows the highway system and hasn't, hasn't gone into many of the small communities. I'm really hoping we can get that information. Could the deputy minister or the department commit to providing such information to committee? Let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we could certainly commit to doing that.
Okay, let's see for that. Mr. Jacobson. Pardon? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I was looking through the latest figures I have on what the GNWT pays for Northwest Tel internet is. It's a little over $3 million for our internet and phone and video conferencing services and then about $5.2 million a year for the digital communications network and then another 1.7 million for the intra-community municipal area network. And I, I have those from October 3rd, 2020. So essentially we pay over $10 million to, to get, give Northwest Ter, Northwest Tel to provide us services. And when I look at how we tender this, it seems prime for an area to break apart some of those services so that smaller service providers could compete with Northwest Tel and providing the GNWT services. So can I get a commitment from the minister, the Department of Finance that they'll look into how we procure internet services? So maybe that $10 million we're giving Northwest Tel could be broken up a little? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll get Mr. Wind to speak to that because I'm not as familiar as he is with the, with the D C N contract that we have with Northwest.
Let's see, Mr. Calgutkar, Mr. Wind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my apologies to the committee. I'm probably not as intimate with the information either as, as potentially our Department of Infrastructure because it's our technology service center that actually does that tendering and operates that network for us. Historically, they have looked at that tender and bundled those services in order to be able to effectively ensure a highly secure and available network service for the government, for government operations. And so our cybersecurity concerns and considerations get, get rolled into that as well, which, which is my area of responsibility for the government. So breaking it up into smaller chunks for core network services could be quite challenging for, for the technology teams that are required to provide that service. But that doesn't necessarily mean that there's not some opportunities for us to consider how we source other network services and things like that in, in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Wind. Any further questions from committee? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Another point is I'm looking at the CRTC's map of areas to expand into and I've tried to raise this both with Northwest Tel and the CRTC in the past, that the Ingram Trail, where a number of my constituents live, is not identified as an area. And when I speak to Northwest Tel or CRTC, they don't really understand that people even live there. And so I, I recognize that may not be a priority compared to some of our other communities, but it's not even on the map. So if I could get the department to look into when they're making their CRTC submissions that this area be included as an area where people live and would like internet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll turn to Mr. Wind.
Mr. Wind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We refer to that as infilling and we have started to have some conversations with service providers around options and we will continue to have conversations. We are aware that that's a potential opportunity through the new universal broadband fund from the federal government as well. It's fairly early days for us on that, but that's another dimension that we're, we're looking into. And it's not just the Ingram Trail, it's, it would be any location where we have residents that are living year-round outside of community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Wind, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the commitment from the department to provide some basic information about the internet network across the Northwest Territories. And putting that together, could you also indicate download, upload rates for each community? You know, as an average or what it currently is? And whether there are distribution systems within the communities that connect to, say, the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link? It's my understanding that GNWT facilities in some of the communities that the Fiber Link goes by are connected to it, but there's no broader distribution system within some of those communities. And I guess it's up to an ISP to pick that up and try to do it, but I'm not convinced that'll ever happen. So can that kind of information be provided with the mapping or description of the, the network that is provided to committee? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we could certainly provide a fairly comprehensive piece of information that would provide a lot of that detail. And in terms of what's within the communities themselves, I would, I'll be able to turn to Mr. Wind, but I believe the recent CRTC announcements under the, under some of their funding, they, they are going to start looking at the last mile within those communities that are currently on microwave. I believe there is 18 of them, but I'll get Mr. Jacobson.
Calgutkar, Mr. Wind, do you have anything further to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to, I don't want to take too much liberty speaking about Northwest Tel initiatives without them in the room, but their recent project that has been supported by the CRTC through their broadband fund anticipates local distribution upgrades in our terrestrial communities, which would include those on the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link in fact, to get them to be able to deliver the 5010 unlimited minimum universal broadband service. And the, the question related to the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link, the, the communities that have a point of presence on the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link, Northwest Tel services are already connected to the MBFL. In Anuvik, Mr. Zuko's New York Network is served by the, by the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link as well. So we can certainly provide some additional context around which communities are connected, whose local distributions are connected to the MBFL. Thank you.
Let's see for that, Mr. Wind, Mr. O'Reilly.
Great, thanks. Great, thanks, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the commitment to provide committee with some further background information. I guess, and just trying to get a better understanding of the McKenzie Valley Fiber Link. And as I understood it, it was going to get to a point where it would start to generate money for GNWT beyond... There's a lot of money that was invested. I think it was $90 million in getting the thing built. And then there was going to be a point where we would start to make some revenues off of this. Have we actually crossed that sort of point? And is it, I guess, can we get kind of like a cash flow for the McKenzie Valley Fiber Link that shows the money going into the capital and money coming back to GNWT in terms of, I guess, wholesale of space on the Fiber Link? Is that sort of information something that our friends at Department of Finance can provide for us? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we can certainly provide the committee with the cash flow projections that we were anticipating when we first figured the project. We do have both a combination of satellite customers and private customers on the line right now. So as Mr. Wind has alluded to, Northwest Tel and New North Networks are providing, are purchasing services from us as well as the German, Swedish, and German and Swedish, French satellite companies. There's another one, but I can't remember who it is right now. But we can certainly provide the business case and the cash flow projections through the Fiber Link.
Hi, must see, Mr. Calgutkar, Mr. Lafferty?
Must see, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just a quick question. I'm looking forward to that information that will be shared with the committee on which communities are connected. Obviously, speaking from my constituencies, fiber optic obviously leads from Yellowknife onto Southern Highway Corridor. And because I've been to the Wati campsite and they have fiber optic line there. They have a full connectivity of internet and cell service out there. And here we have our communities that are not connected on fiber optic, but I'm assuming that's coming. As you know, Bichaco and Edzo are on highway system. Just wondering if they're in a position of being connected or is that contemplated within the department? Because I know there's, with COVID happening now, there's a lot of community members, family members on the internet, especially at the school grounds. And obviously, the internet package is not cheap nowadays. So just wondering if those two communities I referenced, because I know Deputy Minister also talked about fiber optic going on to community of Wati. That's just one community, but I see four communities along with Edzo. So and then obviously, there's Frank Channel and all along the highway. So just curious if those communities have already accessed the fiber optic or what is the process? Must see, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Lafferty, Mr. Calgutkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is Bichaco is already connected to the Northwest Tel Fiber Link. Maybe I'll have Mr. Wind confirm.
Must see, Mr. Wind?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's my understanding is that Bichaco is served, that receives their Northwest Tel services through fiber connection running down the highway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Wind? Any follow up, Mr. Lafferty?
Must see, Mr. Chair. If that's the case, that's great. I just, I guess, need confirmation. Chief Jim Brunner School is such a big school. I'm just hoping that they are connected. I know that Northwest Tel serves the community. There's unlimited providers to Yellowknife, but not necessarily to Bichaco. And I'm hoping that's coming soon enough. Yeah, just the communities that are connected, that are not connected, that'll be provided to the community members. Again, I'm looking forward to those information. And I'd like to know why some of the communities are not connected, why, what's the rationale? So I guess that's forthcoming, so I'm looking forward to that. Must see, just a comment.
The comment to Mr. Lafferty, Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, just in regards to that, to the regards to the costing, to the services provided to our communities that I represent of Holocoptic, Saks and Polotuck coastal communities. And is our government giving any cost reduction in regards to internet service? Because the cost of services in the, once they go over their data limit in regards to internet, it's like, you know, you're paying, some people could pay up to, you know, extra $1,000 a month for that if they don't wash their overage charges. So is there any way that are we doing, helping out, you know, the outlying communities? Like Mr. Lafferty said, that with the cost and then helping, I guess, keeping Northwest Tel at bay or whoever the provider of internet services, which is either the co-op or the, or Northwest Tel. So is there any help being put into, any thought being put into helping the small communities? Thank you.
Must see, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Calgutkar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the GNWT does not have a program like that. But we do feel that the recent announcements out of CRTC in terms of the 5010 service that they are mandating for the 18 communities that are on microwave right now. And then when the lower satellites start being launched and those go into service, then the remaining small communities that are on satellite, I believe there's eight of them, will also be able to benefit from that. And that should help with both the capacity and some of the pricing issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Calgutkar. Any follow up, Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think what we ought to be looking at right now for the small communities on the eight microwave communities that are left, I think we should be looking at something in regards to requesting it from either Northwest Tel or whoever their internet provider is to... Because during this COVID-19, the last nine months, we've been like, you know, going on a year. Like for internet usage is so important for information and stuff like that. And the smaller communities are the ones that are hurting the most in regards to not having nothing to do other than being on your Facebook or your, you know, or doing your stuff what you do normally on your internet. So I think we have to really look at this and try to help our small communities a little bit more than what we're doing. It's all, and getting it done now because just imagine all the overage charges that these, our small community people that have to pay and the cost of, you know, China with everything else in life. So I think this has to be looked at, Mr. Calgutkar. And I think as a government, I think we have to, with all this COVID secretariat monies and that that we've been getting, I think we should be able to utilize something like this and to help the people in the communities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Calgutkar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I can do right now is commit to taking a look at it.
Must see, Mr. Calgutkar. I don't know if you heard that, Jackie? Mr. Jacobson?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can we ever repeat your answer, please, must see?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will commit to the memory that I'll take a look at that further.
Thank you.
All right, must see, Joe, there was a commitment to look into that. Mr. Jacobson, anything further? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last point I'd like to raise is that I recognize the cost of internet is extremely high in the north and we're going to need to subsidize it. But even in Yellowknife, I remember we were seeing that half of the students in Mildred Hall during the pandemic don't have access to internet. So there's really a disparity, I think, for low income families. And if we were in most other jurisdictions, the Canada federal program investing in families would exist where low income families can get $10 a month internet. Northwest Tel's parent company, Bell, has signed on to that. And so we're just at this disadvantage by having Northwest Tel that a lot of the federal subsidies don't even apply. I'm just wondering, is it part of our CRT submissions? Or has there been any work of getting Northwest Tel to buy into a low income internet service? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutkar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware of any initiative like that specifically, but as Mr. Wind mentioned in his presentation, when the GNWT prepares its comments to the overall regulatory framework, that will be under waived, I believe in January of next year, Northwest Tel's operating environment. One of the things that are a priority for us is affordability and ensuring...
Excuse me, Mr. Calgutkar. I think you're muted or a good part of your speech.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair. So as Mr. Whitten said in his presentation, as the GNWT prepares its comments to the CRTC in January, affordability will be a priority for us in ensuring that the CRTC considers affordability of both internet and telco services in the NWT as it's making its deliberations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Calgutkar. One more follow up, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Another idea that I would like to encourage the top armament to look and do is we're already giving Northwest Tel 10, over almost $10 million a year to provide the GNWT internet services. Many of low income people also live in public housing and don't have internet. I would, can the Department of Finance look into rolling internet provision to public housing tenants as part of it? I mean, I think that would check off lots of people. And once again, there is federal funding for this. A number of jurisdictions, public housing units have provided free Wi-Fi. And, you know, I'm not talking the best package ever, but at least the bare minimum of internet available in those units and buildings that we own. So if that's something the Department of Finance could look into, I think that would address a major gap. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see for that, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Calgutkar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not aware of any of those programs. I will certainly work with the NWT Housing Corp. to see if something like, an issue like that can be considered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Must see, Mr. Calgutkar. We look forward to your investigations there. I'd just like to mention one final one here. It's regarding the CRT Commissioner. I see she represents both Alberta and the Northwest Territories. There's big discrepancies there, I see. Because the NWT is vast and, you know, it's really spread out. I'm not sure if the Commissioner that represent us has ever been up here into the Northwest Territories to visit some of our remote communities. Because most times, these personal visits do open the eyes of a Commissioner. I'm not sure if she's ever been up here. I'm wondering if we have any regular communication with the CRTC Commissioner or at any point has the NWT itself looked at having its own representative on that commission? If you could probably update us on the Commissioner and if she's ever been up in the Northwest Territories? Must see?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my understanding is she is quite new, so it's unlikely that she's been given the time. Whereas now, it's unlikely that she's been up to the north yet. But I'll have Mr. Wind comment further. I don't know how, I don't know exactly when she was appointed.
Somebody answering that question over there or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So the current Commissioner was appointed in July. So certainly with the COVID restrictions, it would have been very challenging for her to travel to the north. My office is reaching out to ensure ongoing communications with her office as well. I would say that in the past, the Commissioner of Alberta and the Northwest Territories has visited the NWT, but certainly not the newest Commissioner. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you for that. I guess we'll get more information from your department as to whether we're going to look at getting our own representative for the NWT since it's kind of quite different from Alberta. We look forward to that. If there are any more, no more questions from committee? Seeing no further questions from committee, does the department have any closing remarks or comments? Mr. Calgutkar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I just want to thank the committee gang for this time. As people are well aware, during COVID, the issues around internet and the availability of internet and broadband is very important in the north. That should be a priority going forward.
Organizing that, Mr. Calgutkar. I'd like to thank the Deputy Minister and his staff for appearing before us today. Committee will take a short break before the next presenter joins us on call. Must see. Let's see. (pause) Good afternoon, welcome back, committee. As noted earlier, this standing committee is hearing from key players in telecommunications in the north. This is to give committee an understanding of what is currently happening across the Northwest Territories in the private telecommunications sector. Committee is going to hear next from Mr. Lyle Fabian from Kato Tech Communications. Before Mr. Fabian begins, I would ask committee members to please introduce themselves. Starting with Ms. Nocoby.
Katrina Nocoby, MLA for Great Slave.
Alan Johnson, MLA, Yellowknife North.
Kevin O'Reilly, Frame Lake.
Jackson Laffery, Member for Mofe.
Mr. Jacobson, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, Jackie Jacobson, MLA from the Nutfoot.
And we'll start with the staff.
James Thomas, Committee Clerk.
Amy Lozot, Scudie Advisor.
Jerry Burla, Committee Clerk.
Let's see, members, thanks for the... I now invite our next presenter, Mr. Lyle Fabian, to introduce himself and to proceed with any opening remarks.
Hello, hi, my name is Lyle Fabian. I reside here in Yellowknife, originally from Katla Dichi First Nation, the only first and second reserve of the Northwest Territories. And I was asked to present, so here I am.
Let's see, Mr. Fabian, I take... Can you begin with your presentation? Let's see.
Sure. So the presentation is a bit long, but at the same time, I will, you know, go through some key aspects of, you know, what we do and, you know, why we're here. So I guess, you know, my presentation focuses on broadband ownership for indigenous communities and also data center technologies. And so we can just go to the next slide. So again, one of the key aspects in the past 10 years of me being in this whole data center realm, this whole aspect of what, you know, I believe is, you know, that indigenous peoples, again, you know, both live in their communities and on their traditional lands. I believe that, you know, as indigenous leaders and indigenous peoples, we want to contribute to the modern-day economy and build stronger, independent communities. So this is, you know, I believe, you know, a lot of the communities throughout the Northwest Territories and throughout Canada, in fact. So again, I'm not going to go too much into fiber optic technologies, but again, you know, light is transported through glass of fibers. You know, that picture there is the, one of the projects that I did for the De Beers Gachiquay Diamond Mine Project. You know, that panel alone controls the whole automated plant with all the multiple fibers connecting into it. And you can see that, you know, that just the interface itself is very complex, but again, the whole plant is designed by a central hub of fibers controlling the whole automated plant. Next one. So again, short history of fiber. Again, you know, the lasers have been developed in the early 50s by Charles H. Townes. And again, you know, many, many years later, the first fiber optic cable was laid between the US, United Kingdom and France at 200 megabits, equivalent to about 40,000 telephone circuits at the cost of $335 million. So again, that was the first transcontinental fiber optic cable laid between two continents. And so the next slide is, you know, where we're at today. So what you see there is additional fiber optic telecommunications cable networks throughout the world. And next slide. So again, Alberta in 2005 invested $240 million to look at a new initiative to establish its own IP infrastructure network for Alberta. The government of Alberta invested initially $240 million to promote competition or affordability and standard rates, choice of providers, and that network currently connects 42,000 schools throughout Alberta, hospitals, libraries, government and municipal offices, and connecting 429 communities throughout the Alberta province. Next slide. So what you see there is the current Alberta SuperNet. That infrastructure is basically how the Alberta government decided to look at, you know, a provincial-owned fiber optic network. Next one. So Alberta SuperNet initially drove a lot of the technologies that we see that have been standardized today and throughout the world. Before Alberta SuperNet, there were zero broadband services. There were communities with broadband services before Alberta SuperNet, were only seven. Again, those are communities that can afford the service themselves. Total service providers initially prior to the Alberta SuperNet were two providers. And after Alberta SuperNet came online, you see that currently there are total 78 independent service providers throughout Alberta. Wholesale transport pricing by Alberta SuperNet, you can see prior to the rates for 10 gigs was $21,000, but after Alberta SuperNet, those rates have dropped significantly to $5,100, you know, just for wholesale transport rates throughout Alberta. Again, those rates are sold to ISP service providers who then in turn sell those services back to its residential clients. Next slide, please. So again, where we're at today, Clear Sky Connections. Clear Sky Connections is the largest indigenous telecom-owned network in Canada, which is in Manitoba. They're slated to deploy thousands of kilometers of fiber optic cable throughout Manitoba's First Nation communities. They've began their construction in June 2019 and completed in 2019 from Fort Nelson for a few of the First Nation communities. Last year, they continued their construction and we were instrumental in their initial materials and construction practices for that project in Alberta. And they're right now, again, because of COVID-19, that project is continuing and slated to continue, but has slowed down. Continue on, next one. So again, this is Clear Sky Connections in Manitoba. Just to give you an idea of, you know, the terrain that they face, very similar to the north side of the Great Slave Lake, rocky. Their initial construction design that I suggested was taken to heart by the Clear Sky Connections team and decided to go with that type of construction. Continue on. So again, Mackenzie Fiber Link. And we all know that, you know, that the GNWT initially invested $60 million to build and install 1,100 kilometers of fiber from Fort Smith to Inuvik. There is several points of presence, locations throughout that network. And that fiber was consisted of 48 individual fibers, again, capable of 88 dense wavelength division multiplexing. Again, you know, a state-of-the-art fiber optic network. Continue on. And I'm pretty sure you guys know all this already, so just the next slide. Indigenous fiber optic ownership. Again, one of the things that we always talk about was, again, you know, cultural and language preservation. Currently, right now, media, you know, through Facebook and YouTube and all these kinds of external sources of information are not controlled by indigenous communities and peoples. And again, you know, the media is controlled by massive conglomerates such as YouTube and Facebook and Google. So therefore, you know, we believe that if we can put the fiber optics and the cloud-based technologies in the hands of the communities, that we can also use those kind of technologies to strengthen our language and our culture through the use of media storage and audio and video. Again, these things happen every day. Teaching and demonstration of our culture and language and oral histories and share this information either locally or throughout the worldwide web. So again, economic development. The enabling of the creation of a viable online business and entrepreneurial activities is always paramount in regards to developing the technologies in the north. That kind of technologies can attract new businesses from industry and creating new jobs, providing access to regions, to regional and national and global markets to online new companies. And owning and controlling the fiber optic network will keep revenues and profits generated within the region instead of flowing into outside entities. In order for us to build those kind of fiber optic networks, we need skilled technology jobs that will stem from this kind of network and to operate and maintain, you know, a network of a central office facility, both locally, to maintain that network. Education. Online learning is one of the key aspects of, you know, that we've been promoting. We've been promoting this information for a good 10 years. And again, everybody knows, you know, a lot of the online education, you know, enables younger students and people in remote communities to overcome barriers of time and distance. Communities with young children will continue their educational pursuits either at home and reducing childcare costs and constraints and the sharing of education providers in remote communities to provide quality teaching and learning resources with video streaming, Zoom, Teams, et cetera. One of the key aspects that we're looking at now is that, you know, that we've been promoting this for, again, like I said, for a very long time. And because of the COVID-19, you know, the pandemic, you know, we've seen that a lot of this online education has been very strained as of lately due to lack of competition, due to lack of services. And this is one of the key aspects that, you know, that in order for us to continue on remote and distance learning, we need fiber optic infrastructures in place in order for us to move on both the education piece and the healthcare piece, which I believe is on the next slide. and the healthcare piece, which I believe is on the next slide. And again, health and wellness. Improve health and wellness for First Nation members. Increasing options for telehealth, telemedicine, video health, remote diagnoses, treatments, monitoring, consultations with medical specialists in major medical centers other than, you know, in smaller communities, they usually have nursing stations. And again, you know, gaining access to to remote specialists outside of the community is another potential to not only to to gain access to experts within the community, but also reduce travel costs for remote communities for 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 proper diagnosis in the in a small nursing station, you know, throughout throughout the Northwest Territories. Next one. First Nation governance. Again, controlling the fiber can secure all sectors of business, residential, institutional and community governments. Nation-to-nation video interaction that can reduce travel costs. An electronic government can streamline interactions with community leaders, governments and departments, secure electronic storage of sensitive data. Again, you know, these are the things that that create jobs. We need technology and innovation in order for us to to pursue these kind of these kind of technologies in the north, which we, a lot of First Nations do not do. And again, you know, one of the key aspects that I've been hearing about here in the Northwest Territories is about decentralizing government services and pushing those services off into First Nation communities. A an infrastructure is needed in order for us to do those kind of types of services. Next slide. Strengthen our connections. Again, sharing of our local indigenous interests like our culture, sporting events, local meetings, research, news, history and technology. Connection both within in our own communities and amongst other communities across the country will be strengthened. Our social and economic prosperity will be enhanced by development of community-owned and controlled communication infrastructures. Next slide. Our beginnings is that in 2009, through Kettle Dichi First Nation, we've 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 been working with Kenor to 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 look at, you know, the the Kettle Dichi First Nations own, I guess, networking infrastructure for the First Nation. We were very successful in in attaining a grant, you know, to to build a a network for the First Nation. Gave us the ability to train, you know, website developers. We introduced video conferencing capabilities for the First Nation. And also during that, in 2009, we want to take a look at not only the wireless technology for the First Nation and also training people to become network certified through Cisco certification. We wanted to take a look at the feasibility of building the First Nation's own fiber optic network. So this grant in in 2009 gave us the ability to build the wireless fiber, a wireless network for the First Nation community. Next slide. And again, that what you see there is again, you know, in 2009, wireless technology wasn't all that great. You know, we were we were doing internet sharing from the band office, which is on the far left, to the daycare and to the the Judith Hagan group home, which is a is which was an elders' daycares, an elders' day center. We were able to share internet throughout that small network. And again, that was our first attempt to to reduce internet costs in the community. Those those individual locations purchased and bought their own internet DSL internet from Northwest Tel. Our wireless network gave us the ability to shut down those those additional costs to those programs and to those program deliveries to to do cost sharing throughout this this small network. Next slide. 2011, again, you know, with a two-year funding grant, we went back to Kenor to 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 take a look at through the feasibility study that we did two years prior was to look at a single 1 kilometer 48 strand fiber optic network. We wanted to develop an ICT curriculum delivery of Cisco certification through the new proposed Daniel Sumfair Education Adult Education Training Center. And we also that year gave us the ability to train eight KFN members in heavy equipment and also learning how to understand fiber optic technology, heavy equipment technology and how to lay and 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 trench that in that technology within the First Nation. So again, that technology, fiber optic technology coincided in strengthening the wireless technology to build our own fiber optic network throughout the community. Next slide. So again, KFN elders care, the complex, the grocery store, the school, the daycare. That there, we laid all the infrastructure in place and which is backed up by the wireless optic, the wireless network done in 2009. And those two networks are still in operation today. Continue on. 2013, again, two-year funding grant, 279,000. One of the aspects that we concentrated on was that, yes, we had a great network in regards to reducing broadband access for the First Nation community. But one of the key aspects of our First Nation community was that the bottleneck was, you know, through DSL services by the incumbent. So we wanted to connect off the reserve because our services was coming directly from the Towne Haie River. And so we wanted to connect off the reserve to Northwest Tel's fiber optic cable that just ran along the First Nation community. And this gave us a an opportunity to look at a feasibility study in learning how to become an ISP, the benefits of becoming an ISP, learning about bottleneck technologies, how to mitigate those bottlenecks within DSL technology and transforming DSL technology to fiber optic technology throughout the throughout the community. We wanted to, again, place the fiber optic infrastructure in the hands of the First Nation. And again, the First Nation community purchased their own power poles for the project. And next slide. So what you see there is the, you know, the KFN community, which was on the far right, the the initial 1 kilometer fiber optic network. This next project gave us the ability to connect off the reserve because our direct services came from the Towne Haie River, which was DSL internet phone line tech, aging copper-based technology. And yet Northwest Tel's new fiber cable ran right along the reserve in 2009. And the Hanhold was just situated right out the community. And so we wanted to gain access to that. Next slide. So again, with just basic file sharing technology, you'll see that our fiber, you know, with with the switching technology put in place, which is 1 gigabit per sec, our KFN fiber network is, you know, at the time, you'll see that the the average DSL provider, their their services compared to the fiber optic network on the KFN reserve, there is no comparison. And next slide. 2016, Yellowknife Dene. Again, Yellowknife Dene approached us and wanted to take a look at a $48,000 feasibility grant. They were quoted, you know, to to bring better DSL services to DETA, you know, was 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 a huge cost. And so with that $48,000 grant, I suggested that, you know, we can design and engineer a wireless backbone to to connect both DETA and DLO over a wireless network. And in 2016, in comparison to 2019 comparison today, the wireless technology has become robust, inexpensive and more user-friendly to to enhance community broadband innovation and connection. Next slide. So what you see there on the bottom is a an access point that that we designed. And then we we placed that access point on the highest point in Yellowknife, which is the Northern Heights. And and we were able to sign a five-year internet access agreement through through DSL cable internet with Northwest Tel for the YK Dene and and share those those downtown internet speeds to both DETA and DLO. Even though DLO is just, you know, just on the outskirts of of the city of Yellowknife, you know, they were still on DSL internet speeds. But because of, you know, the the wireless technology that we put in, which is 1.3 gigabit backhalls, a wireless technology, we were able to increase, I guess, broadband connectivity for both communities. They still own and and maintain this this wireless network today. Next slide. And again, other projects. Giant Mine remediation project. There was, again, old copper-based technology. We laid fiber inside the mine. Next slide. De Beers Stuart Olson. We we assisted in doing a lot of the the fiber optic networking in the whole plant. Next slide. So Kettle Tech Communications Future. What we're looking at today is is a new company called Kettle Tech Fiber. Next slide. Kettle Tech Fiber is a next-generation fiber optic project. Our goal is to build and deploy an indigenous-owned next-generation fiber optic network for added redundancy in the Northwest Territories. We feel that we can facilitate a three-layered open broadband access which can provide access for industry, internet service providers and local providers. KTF is is not, we are not a service provider, but a a local transport provider. Our company would manage the network and provide turnkey variety of services to ISPs who in turn focus and bring those services to their residential and commercial clients. Our approach will focus on fiber optic transport services, delivery of high quality of service and at a lower cost with added modular data center technology. Next slide. And again, modular data center REIT is basically what we're investing in and also, which is again, MDCs, which are flexible and scalable, small environmental footprints. Our our goal is to to looking at leasing these data centers, options, renting, rack space, so on and so forth. We can ship our MDCs anywhere on our network within weeks for deployment. Our our outdoor 10,000 square foot or 15,000 square foot data center facility, which we designed with Schneider Electric and Microsoft to to look at data center technologies in the north. One of the key aspects that a lot of the data center technology hosting services in the United States are always having to contend with flooding, tornadoes, earthquakes. Our data centers here in the north, we can keep them cool nine months out of the year. And and this is our latest 3D rendering. You can check that out on our our KFN website at Kettle Tech website at kettletech.ca and just go to the to the broadband investment in the Northwest Territories. And you'll see our our 3D renderings of our of our outdoor outdoor data center facility. Next slide. Again, modular data centers. We're we're not designing any of this. This is all over-the-shelf technology, which again is designed by by Schneider Electric. Next slide. So one of the key aspects that we're concentrating on now is the the link, phase one link between high-level Alberta to to Kettle Dichi First Nation, which is Haie River Dena Reserve, which is our phase one project that we're currently concentrating on within the next, within these next two years. Our goal is to to build that fiber optic phase one network to, again, to enhance connectivity in the north, bring redundancy which is needed in the north, and also open up the the north to healthy competition. And also our data center technology is is, we need a fiber optic backbone to to look at our our data center REIT, our real estate investment here in the north. And all the red is basically our plan to expand our our network throughout throughout BC, Alberta. And and also we'd like to bring additional connectivity to the Mackenzie Fiber Link. Next slide. So again, our fiber will help communities help own their own networks through leasing. Our goal is to help assist communities build out their own community-based broadband networks. We'd like to lease those community-owned fiber networks from the community. And also in turn, we lease those infrastructures to to ISPs at a fraction of the cost if they had to do it themselves. So what our goal is that we want to do 90% of all the heavy heavy lifting with First Nation communities. And also through our project and our experience with Kettle Dichi First Nation, we were able to attain up to 80% investment for community-based broadband builds with a 20% investment. So what we're saying is that, you know, we can help communities build, not only build and own these networks, but also they don't need to understand how to maintain their own network. We'd like to give an opportunity to to lease their infrastructure and lease the infrastructure to ISPs who in turn don't need to do all the heavy lifting. Their return on investment won't be 100%. They don't need to invest in in coming to the north. We will do all that with the First Nation communities in tow. And then we lease those infrastructures to the ISPs at a fraction of the cost. So then their return on investment is 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 much quicker. And they they don't need to see return within 20 years. Their return is almost instantaneous. They just need to we will supply, you know, last mile technology, wireless solutions, either fiber to the home or wireless technologies. Next slide. Leasing infrastructure creates new business, creates new competition, innovation and competitive rates. Communities can take their market share or reinvest into additional expansions. Indigenous-owned networks will benefit economically for the life of the network. Currently, there are 663 First Nation communities throughout Canada. Our goal, my ultimate goal is within 20 to 30-year goal is that we want to expand throughout Canada through relationships with other First Nation communities, helping bring community-based broadband networks online. Next slide. Again, these are all our project supporters. Microsoft, Quintillion, Bluetown, Forest Green. Again, you know, we we're we're always building new partnerships. We we also have a new letter of support from the from the government of Northwest Territories and also the Yukon government. We're currently working on a new letter of support from the Alberta government. Again, you know, we're buying a lot of the technologies. The data center technologies will all be built in Alberta. So therefore, you know, we're 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 hoping to 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 show that, you know, our project will also enhance the AXIA fiber optic network in Alberta. All we're trying to do is we're just trying to expand an AXIA-like supernet in the Northwest Territories and throughout Alberta, BC, Yukon. Next slide. I think that's that's it. Not too sure. Thank you, Masi. And again, you know, take a look at our website at kettletech.ca and that's that's pretty much it.
I see Mr. Fabian. I'll open the floor to the committee for any questions or comments that may have. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Fabian. I'm excited about all the work you're doing. I really like the philosophy behind it of, you know, allowing First Nations to control their data and control their internet. It really is the the future that we want. Specifically in regard to your project in KFN, I note that you had to access into Northwest Tel's fiber infrastructure. Can you speak to any? Can you speak to any issues in accessing to that? How have you been compensating them for accessing their infrastructure? And was that an easy process to go through? I also note you're now planning to build another fiber line, so you're not on their infrastructure. So if you could just expand on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Masi, Mr. Johnson. Masi, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fabian.
The access was almost a long time coming. You know, since we laid that infrastructure in place only up until last year, I believe the community got better enhancement in their infrastructure in the community. But I believe because of changes of power in the community, that project didn't go as smooth as I hoped, because I left the community in 2013 to pursue my own company and also pursue other goals for expanding fiber optic technologies in the north. But I believe that the First Nation does have better broadband access because of the infrastructure in place. I don't know any details in regards to the access, how they got the better access. But again, prior to that, it was almost, it was, it was a lot of touch-and-go relationship with Northwest Tel. And I believe they've, at the end of the day, you know, the community did achieve, you know, better internet access for the First Nation. But I don't know those intimate details of what transpired, because again, they just got better connectivity, I believe, a couple of years ago, maybe last year.
Masi, Mr. Fabian. Not sure if that answered your question, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I recognize that it can be difficult to exactly understand the nuances of the funding when we want to access Northwest Tel's infrastructure. I guess I want to speak to how you anticipate the last mile working. I understand your plans are to essentially build that last mile and then find an ISP. Can you just give me an example of which ISPs would be interested in leasing this and actually providing it? Would Northwest Tel be at all in that conversation? Or would they be the obvious competition? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Masi, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fabian.
How I see, you know, the, what I've stated before to other communities was the fact that we are not an ISP, we're not an internet service provider. We leave that to the ISPs that are interested in coming north. And in all intents and purposes, our redundancy in our fiber optic network can enhance Northwest Tel's services in the north. We'd like them to become a customer in regards to redundancy. That has, I stated that to them on several, on one meeting back in April, that we know they have challenges with their network and that we'd like to, you know, potentially have them as a customer, as a client. But at the same time, they have to understand that we are not just going to close off our network just because, you know, they're a client. We want to open up the north to other service providers, meaning that we create a healthy level playing field in the north. And that through our data center REIT, which is our real estate investment, we'd like to bring cloud-based services, ISP, additional, you know, storage, cloud-based video technology, voice-over IP technology through these data center technologies in the north. One of the key aspects of our plan is that we know that the client base in the Northwest Territories is very small. And so therefore, in order for us to look at other potential resource revenue generation, the data center REIT is our number-one play on our project in regards to a long-term economic sustainable project for us is the data center technology. You can't make money on internet. There's no way. It can never be done with such small clients in both Yukon, Nunavut, and the Northwest Territories. So again, our play is to open up the north to southern data center suppliers, to look at the north as a safe haven for them, to store their information, park their information here. We own the infrastructure, we own the data center technology, and we have companies like Microsoft who believe in our project and signed on and are promoting our project, you know, throughout Canada, the United States.
Masi, Mr. Fabian. Are there any questions from committee? Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, and thanks for the presentation. As you know, the CRTC has opened up a public comment process for internet and telecommunications across the north and on Northwest Tel's performance. Do you intend to participate? And what advice would you like to pass along to this committee? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Masi, Mr. O'Reilly. Mr. Fabian.
Well, I suggest that, you know, the new broadband innovation fund of $1.7 million, again, you know, my opinion is the fact that, yes, you know, there's a new grant application that we're going to be chasing this time around. But again, you know, the CRTC needs to look at community-based broadband networks and invest heavily in those. We should not be relying on OneWeb and Starlink to bring that last-mile solution. Again, the problem with the last-mile solution with OneWeb and Starlink is the fact that we don't own that infrastructure. That infrastructure, we're going to be giving access to not only Canadian residents to have Elon Musk, you know, collect the data of, you know, average Canadians and being in the hands of another conglomerate. You know, we need to look at alternatives in regards to projects like ours that can really strengthen fiber optic technology and data center technologies in the north. You know, we'd like to, our goal is to gain access to the Mackenzie Fiber Link. Again, same concept. This Mackenzie Fiber Link is open for business. We're just applying the same technology, the same concept, and we'd like to bring better services throughout the Mackenzie Fiber Link. And that, you know, we need the CRTC to understand that indigenous-led projects is the key to helping solving the last-mile digital divide in, throughout Canada and throughout the north. We should not be allowing, you know, the continuous players gaining massive advantage over, you know, over other smaller ISPs that currently operate here in the north. Again, Northwest Tel, you know, got a grant to increase fiber optic communication in Inuvik. The issue I have with that is the fact that they hired Ballard Construction, which is a southern firm, to build the fiber optic network in Inuvik. And where's, why didn't they hire locally? Why didn't they hire New North Networks, which is another player in Inuvik that is providing wholesale broadband access in the north, in Inuvik? Again, they're competition, but New North Networks has the ability to hang fiber in the community. Funding grants like the CRTC through the broadband innovation grant has, is affecting smaller ISPs throughout the north and creating a huge disadvantage in regards to broadband rollouts. And, you know, this whole Inuvik project is just one of them. You know, there's a lot of companies out there, a lot of incumbents out there that are gaining unfair advantage to federal government grants to do their own rollouts within regions that are very challenging, and yet, you know, no employment is ever seen from these projects.
Masi, Mr. Fabian. Any further questions from committee? Mind the time that we've got, five minutes left for questions. Ms. Knocby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe Mr. Fabian can just summarize sort of what the biggest barrier he feels towards indigenous ownership of broadband, and then as well to how he feels that communications with the GNWT goes, and maybe where some of the barriers are. And, because I keep hearing over and over again that it's, there's a lot of dissatisfaction around different providers, so perhaps he can explain to us maybe what would be a solution to that or some steps forward.
Masi, Ms. Knocby. Mr. Fabian.
So I guess one of the biggest barriers is the fact that, you know, we need, you know, committees like this to really look at alternatives in regards to last-mile solutions for indigenous communities, building and strengthening with those communities, you know, the possibilities of doing community-based broadband rollouts with the federal government, federal grants, applications, strengthening the communities to gain access to their own community-based broadband networks is one, and supporting those. And because that's what we are doing, that's what we've been doing for the past five years, is trying to strengthen community broadband access and networks through either wireless or fiber optic technology. And the community governments themselves would benefit, not only the community governments, but also GNWT would also benefit by gaining access to a First Nation-owned network. And also managing those type of networks is, again, is, you know, we don't have, yes, we have the connectivities, we have the connectivity in the north, but really, we have no real wholesale broadband choice in the north. We have no competition in the north, no real choice of providers in the north. And so therefore, what we're trying to do is we're just trying to gain support from both the, you know, this type of committee to support what we're trying to achieve, and also, you know, promoting what we're trying to do in regards to strengthening community-based broadband networks throughout the north. And again, this community is, this committee is very, can be very instrumental in regards to looking at last-mile solutions through our eyes and through the eyes of First Nation communities, and not really supporting status quo. I know that, you know, the Northwest Territories and the GNWT really depend heavily on Northwest Tel's services, you know. For the GNWT to depend on community-based broadband networks would be that much more supportive. And gaining access to better technologies, you know, we're not trying to change, you know, how things are done overnight, which is going to be gradual changes that we're hoping to bring. Through competition is the key. Right now, we just don't have that option here in the north. And I believe that, you know, the community, the committee really needs to look at, look at healthy competition in the north. And, you know, the GNWT has already done its first step by building the Mackenzie Fiber Link. How are we going to, how are we going to utilize the Mackenzie Fiber Link to build and strengthen those communities along that link to do last-mile solutions within that Should be the focus.
All right, Masi, to Mr. Fabian. Ms. Knocby.
Thank you. I'm all for empowering the communities, so I like that messaging. I guess when I say the GNWT, though, I don't mean necessarily this committee. I'm curious to know about what sort of schedule of communication or interaction you're having with the two departments that are involved with this, and not just yourself, I guess, maybe speaking for your industry. Do you feel that that communication and that conversation is, the information is flowing back and forth between yourselves and the departments well? Or do you think that's an area that could be improved? Thank you.
Masi, Ms. Knocby. Mr. Fabian.
I think, again, you know, the communication can be improved in regards to, you know, supporting other goals and plans. You know, our goal is to enhance technology in the north. You know, communication is just a small aspect, which is a huge aspect. But really, you know, our data center technology is the key to everything that we're doing. And we just like to, you know, I'm glad that we were given an opportunity to present our project to this committee. And, you know, it just helps us to, you know, because I've been doing this for six years and doing individual rollouts and, you know, we just did, you know, a project here in Yellowknife, we did a project in Inuvik. You know, we have the capability of building fiber optics, rolling out fiber optic technology, you know, for the past six years. And so we just felt that it was time for us to look at, you know, we know how to build it, why don't we just do it ourselves? And so that's the goal, is that, you know, with the GNWT's help and the committee's help to support what we're doing gives us the advantage of really achieving, you know, those goals for the next two years.
Masi, Mr. Fabian. We're all out of time for questions as we have to get ready for our next presenters, but we really encourage you to continue on with your endeavors, and we wish you all the best of luck. And thank you, Mr. Fabian, for your presentation, but I'll give you the last remarks if you'd like. Masi.
Yeah, again, like I said, you know, I'd like to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to present what we're working on. Again, look at our website. You know, our goal is to strengthen our northern economy. Look at data and data center technology innovation, enhancing jobs, technology and innovation in the north through fiber and data center technology. You know, it's, I believe that's the future. We need to look at alternative resource revenue generation other than mining the industry, which has, you know, always been the key aspect of, you know, the north's economy. Now, we're looking at, you know, because of COVID-19, you know, has really shown that both the diamond industry is not as stable as we all thought it was, nor tourism. And yet, the key aspect that has not been affected, which is communications. And so therefore, I think we need to, you know, support last-mile solutions for indigenous communities as the key economic driver for the north. I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Masi, for that, Mr. Fabian. I'd like to thank you for joining us today and presenting us your views. Committee will now take a short break to get ready for our next presenter. Masi, Cho. Okay, welcome back, committee. As noted earlier, the standing committee is hearing from key players in telecommunications in the North. This is to give committee an understanding of what is currently happening across the Northwest Territories in the private telecommunications sector. Committee is going to hear from Mr. Phillips. Before Mr. Phillips begins his introductions, I'd like to have committee introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Katrina Knocelby, MLA for Great Slave.
Alan Johnson, MLA for Yellowknife North.
Kevin O'Reilly, Frame Lake.
Jackson Lafferty, Member for Monfi.
And the staff.
Jackie Jacobson, MLA and a foot.
Glenn Rutland, Committee Clerk.
Amy Lazott, Scaddy Advisor.
James Thomas, Committee Clerk.
Okay, thank you very much, members and staff. I will now invite our next presenter, Mr. Jeffrey Philip, to introduce himself and to proceed with any opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonatris. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we're hearing loud and clear.
All right. So yeah, it might be just as well to have the pictures up on the screen so that while I go through the presentation, you've got something more exciting to look at. My name is Jeff Philip. I'm the co-founder and CEO of SSI Canada, and I thank the committee for the invitation to present on the topic of improving the affordability, quality, and reliability of telecommunications in the NWT. SSI has been working on these challenges for quite literally the last two decades, and we've achieved and learned a lot, some of which I'd like to share here today. I'm pleased if I could ask one thing, it's that you act on what you learn through this hearing. There's no time to wait for yet another time-consuming CRTC review to figure out how to regulate Northwest Tel. The problems are well documented and the remedies exist within the current regulatory framework. Frankly, this is about having the fortitude to make a decision to change course before it's too late, and I mean that quite literally. Before I begin my comments, I should add some background for those of you not familiar with our corporate history. SSI is a northern company. Our headquarters is in Yellowknife, but our staff are spread across two territories and six provinces, and we continue to grow. We specialize in remote area connectivity and energy solutions, providing broadband and other services across Canada's North. We've also worked in Africa, Indonesia, and the South Pacific with a common thread being infrastructure that transforms communities and improves socioeconomic outcomes. Most of you will probably not remember that back in 2004, SSI was the first company in Canada to launch a commercial broadband wireless service, and we did it here in Yellowknife. Some of you may be at the live webcast we did in the Explorer. And if that seems strange, remember that the cellphones back then were, they were weapons. They weren't so smart and wireless internet didn't exist. We were the first, literally. Some of our better-known projects include Kinnick, Nunavut's award-winning network, which we built in 2005 prior to our wireless system. Dial-up didn't even exist, or if it did, it was a long-distance phone call at a dollar plus a minute. Fifteen years later, we're still the only provider offering services to all 25 communities at the same price. And that's significant, fifteen years later. In 2006, we did it again in 31 communities across the Northwest Territories. This was another first for most of these communities. Sadly, our NWT services met with an unfortunate demise for reasons I will attribute to a lack of political fortitude, and I'm being polite, a disease I hope we'll soon have a vaccine for. Over the next decade, we accomplished a number of other firsts, including the provision of high-speed satellite connectivity to the Canada C-3 ship during its historic 120-day voyage from Toronto to Victoria through the Northwest Passage. This was the first time any ship had navigated the Northwest Passage while connected to the rest of the world and it allowed the journey to be shared with 20-plus million Canadians in real time. I was on leg nine that went from Pond to Joe Haven through Resolute and Greece. It was amazing. Other proud moments that stand out include 2016, when we upgraded every community in Nunavut to 4G wireless LTE. And we followed that up in 2018 with the launch of SSI Mobile, bringing cellular service to the vast majority of Nunavut for the first time ever with packages that rival southern Canada. www.kinnick.com for anyone in Nunavut watching. Given the size of the territory and the challenge of this groundbreaking initiative, it didn't go unnoticed, and we were honored to receive the National Startup Canada Award in 2018. Last year, we celebrated another first when we co-founded a new mobile telecoms company with EU Company, a Cree investment firm in EU Communications Network. This exciting partnership is currently building out an extensive cellular network in the Eurysthene James Bay region of Northern Quebec. And we're not stopping there. We continue to expand our network partnering with other First Nations to improve and extend telecoms in a number of regions across Canada. And in each case, the partners will control the entity with us investing alongside leveraging our expertise, our systems, and our model is helping deliver early and successful results with engaged local partners. So if it's not apparent, let me state that I firmly believe that with the right partnership and a fair playing field, we can do a better job of delivering innovative broadband and mobile services in even the smallest and most remote communities, places that monopolies prefer not to go and less threatened. Now that you know a bit more about the corporate Kool-Aid, let me take just another moment to explain why the North is so personally important. My parents founded this notion in 55 years ago in Fort Providence, just 320 kilometers down the road. I was born and raised there, as were our children. Thirty years ago, my wife Stephanie, who's our CFO and co-founder of the company, started SSI Micro, which were now rebranded SSI Canada as the technology division of our companies. Our mission has always been to ensure that all communities have access to quality infrastructure, including affordable, high-quality telecommunications systems. To achieve this, we've invested heavily in technology, in infrastructure, and most critically, in the people who make it possible. In Nunavut, we've invested over $150 million in infrastructure since 2005 in a successful partnership with the federal government. And to this day, we are the only company to offer the same broadband and wireless packages at the same price in every market, no matter how small. In addition to infrastructure investments, our model also provides critical local jobs that contribute today over $2 million annually back into local economies. Sadly, most of our investments in the last decade have been outside the Northwest Territories despite our origins here. And the truth is, we haven't been able to offer the same competitive, innovative types of services. In fact, in the decade or so since the CRTC endorsed the idea of local competition in Northwest Tel's serving area, something we initiated, there's actually been a decrease in competition, not an increase, and that's a tragedy. But enough of the history lesson, I come here today with three simple messages, and I really do believe they are simple. First, no market is too small or too remote to benefit from competition. And by competition, I mean facilities-based competition rooted in local investment and giving back to local communities. Second, it's not enough for governments to support the concept of competition, they have to actually support competitors. I'll get into that in a minute. And third, the government can and must act on this now. There's no need or time to wait until the CRTC has completed yet another review of how it regulates Northwest Tel. That is important, but it need not delay measures that can be taken right now. In 2011, following the last regulatory framework review, the Commission determined that, quote, "Canadians who reside in the North should be able to enjoy the full benefits of competition." The Commission decided to introduce local competition in Northwest Tel's territory to provide a choice of service providers and different service options. Let me just restate that. Prior to that, there was no ability for a competitor to offer competitive services in Northwest Tel's serving area. This was the last regulated monopoly in Canada, and it was removed in 2011 following much pressure by us. That decision enabled SSI to move forward with additional investment and other providers, not just SSI, delivering on the goal to provide more choice and innovation to northern consumers. Unfortunately, in order to provide local services in the Northwest Territories and in Yukon, competitors need to pay exorbitant rates for access to Northwest Tel's monopoly, publicly funded fiber backbone services. Building on CRTC's 2011 ruling, SSI put a lot of pressure on Northwest Tel and on the regulator to offer a wholesale service that would meet the needs of competitors at a fair rate. After several years, you heard that right, several years, what we got and all we got is a service called Wholesale Connect. And spoiler alert, it doesn't provide the basic connectivity requirements that we or any competitor actually need. It's been intentionally crippled to make it effectively unusable by competitors. In summary, there's a lack of effective access to the fiber backbone, not a lack of market opportunity. No community is too small. For any competitor to be able to provide the service, innovation, competitive pressure the Commission was talking about when it referred to the full benefits of local competition, we need two things. First, we need a fair playing field, and this is where the government can make an immediate contribution. There's a simple way to help. End single-source supply situations in telecoms. There's no need to delay. Where there are alternatives, and not everywhere, you should have the share of any single supplier at, say, 50% of the government's business in that market. And working with multiple suppliers is a great way to benefit from better pricing, better service, customization, and innovation. Just as consumers benefit when there's competition in the retail market, enterprise and public sector consumers benefit when there's competition in the wholesale. The government of the Northwest Territories is the single largest producer or purchaser of telecommunications in history, and there's no reason why competitive service providers, including SSI, can't supply you with, for example, some of the mobile phone services. There's no reason why competitors shouldn't have some portion of your IT telephone support contracts or install contracts, your remote broadband hookups. And for those that are here or have been here long enough, you will remember the day prior to Artacom when local contracts were issued locally in communities. People like Nunanet Communications, Saku Investments, Katikmi Corporation had contracts in those communities prior to separation. That all got lost when Artacom came along as a single point of supply, and that's a mistake. And in fact, the argument was not to divert too far, but the argument was that, don't worry, I was told this directly, so was I to be in a Caloet, don't worry, the wholesale rate is going to be so good, you won't need the government as a client anymore. You'll be able to just worry about the end users, the consumers, because Northwest Tel's never going to be an internet. Here we are. So government cannot just support the concept of competition to receive the benefits of competition, government has to actually support competitors. Frankly, it makes no sense to rely on one supplier, especially one whose decisions are Frankly, it makes no sense to rely on one supplier, especially one whose decisions are driven by southern Canadian parent Bell Canada. It doesn't make sense. There's a second move the government can take now to improve telecom without waiting for the CRTC to complete a lengthy policy review. Northwest Tel has a monopoly on the fiber backbone in Northwest Territories, the Yukon, but it also has a monopoly over the cable plant in Yellowknife, in Whitehorse, and a few other communities. And they refuse to allow others, including SSI, to use those facilities to provide a competing service and choice for consumers. It's something known as third-party internet access or TPIA in the south. And to be clear, Northwest Tel is the only incumbent phone and cable company in Canada not required to offer TPIA to its competitors. Much like we weren't allowed to compete in the, in the internet and the mobile phone business, or the mobile phone business or the phone service, we can now, and TPIA is one of those things that, that needs to happen soon. It's not normal, and consumers in the NWT are poorer as a result. Northwest Tel's high-priced access to its monopoly backbone, the Wholesale Connect service I mentioned, and its refusal to sell TPIA services left competitors like SSI at a significant disadvantage for years. And we've spent millions, literally, fighting this. Now with Northwest Tel's introduction of unlimited internet packages over those same cable and fiber networks, they're making a naked attempt to crush what little competition internet service there is left in the NWT and the Yukon. I thought their introduction of fiber in Anuvik was awfully strange, given they've never done it prior and they didn't get a subsidy for it. Shout out to Tom Zubko. We do have a solution, and you can help. Today, we made two separate but very much related filings with the CRTC. First, we're intervening to ask the Commission to fix the unjust discrimination built into the new unlimited internet package as Northwest Tel's introduced. Simply put, the Commission, the Commission must make sure that all customers, including wholesale customers like SSI, benefit from the Commission's recent broadband fund contribution of $62 million. By not lowering the wholesale rates, they're blatantly discriminating against a group of customers who also happen to be their competitors. And to be clear, this is not just about SSI and its customers. This also benefits other service, every other service provider, including Keplotek, Arctech, New North, Iris Tel, Global Storm, and I'm sure I've missed probably a few others. Our second filing is an urgent application of the CRTC to require Northwest Tel to offer third-party internet access, TPIA, to its competitors. This is long overdue, and it's been supported by the GNWT as a necessary measure for several years now. We just need the Commission to actually hear us. Both filings ask the Commission to act urgently, not to wait two years for longer or longer to first complete a review of the regulatory framework of Northwest Tel. Residents of the NWT and the Yukon should not be denied benefits available to Canadians elsewhere. We hope that the government of the Northwest Territories will support us in both of these proceedings, and I'm happy to leave you a copy of what we're filing today with the CRTC. But I also know you're interested in hearing about the long view of Northwest Tel's regulatory framework, so let me close quickly with a few last comments. I believe that the reason for a lack of competition in the Northwest Territories has to do with a regulatory system that still focuses on keeping one business and one business model alive and well at the expense of Northwest Tel's competitors and ultimately its customers. I also believe the reason for the focus on protecting Northwest Tel is that the CRTC really doesn't believe that competition, true competitors, not just arbitragers, as the Chairperson Ian Scott recently dismissed competitors, doesn't believe it's feasible here, and yet here we are. It didn't exist before we brought it. We were not the incumbent. To be clear, we are the incumbent in broadband. We brought broadband. It did not exist. So it is possible. We reject these assertions based on the simple fact that we, not Northwest Tel, was the first market to bring this to the market in these communities. We also propose that technology, ingenuity, and homegrown entrepreneurship has enabled broadband to thrive where the regulator has allowed it to happen and where the government has supported it. We urge you to recommend to the government, both territorial and federal, that it support competition and competitors through the power of its purchasing decisions as well as the persuasion in regulatory proceedings. People living in remote and outlying communities and the businesses and governments and other organizations that serve these communities must have access to affordable broadband at a competitive price. We also believe Canada can be a global showcase where broadband overcomes the barriers and where all regions of the country, no matter how small, benefit and participate fully in the global economy. Thank you for having allowed us the opportunity to present, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let's see for the presentation, Mr. Phillips. I will now open the floor for questions, comments. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation today. I, I support many of the concerns you bring forward, and I'm hoping that this committee can, can make some progress on this. Earlier today, I asked the Department of Finance why we don't unbundle all of the services we presently purchase from Northwest Tel. GNWT pays about $10 million a year to Northwest Tel for a variety of internet, phone, different services. And the department raised the concern that one of the reasons they've gone with Northwest Tel is by having one whole system. There's, there's better security measures in place. I'm not sure I buy this argument. I find often when departments don't have an answer, the security, privacy, reliability are kind of the backstops of, oh, we're concerned about that. Can you just speak to whether there are legitimate security concerns if, for example, SSI provided some of those services? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Phillips?
Thanks. That's an excellent question. And, you know, the answer is maybe not quite as simple as, as people would want me to suggest. The simple answer is yes, it is that simple. And you're right, people always complicate it with security questions, but you know what? The, the question to ask any department or CGS or anyone that brings that up is, are we not encrypting our data end-to-end already? Do we not have firewalls at each location that encrypts it? And if that is the case, does it not run over the public internet when it goes south, or actually does it run over some private fiber line where the ones and zeros don't mix? Because frankly, it has to be encrypted. The encryption is the simplest thing. I was asked this question by the CEO, CIO of Nunavut a long, long time ago. And I said the same thing. If you aren't already encrypting your data, then there's something wrong with the IT department. The second point is, there are certainly things that I would agree are complicated to do where you, you distribute the work, where you break up a tender, you break up supply. But you know what? Inclusion in competition is not simple, right? If it were simple, then we'd have great competition everywhere already. It is going to take work. It is going to take the GNWT making an effort to, 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 to bring competition, to foster competition. I'll give you the perfect example. I think it's one of them. We do a hell of a lot in the north to try to encourage our indigenous youth to take positions in government, in departments, in roles, and responsibilities that are important because we believe it's important. And it costs money, and it takes time, and we call it our affirmed action policy or whatever you want. We need something like that. We used to have it before Artacom came along, and Artacom was, you know, I won't actually go into all of that, but, I mean, the skeletons that are Artacom are laughable. And frankly, that should just die, that concept of sole source in the community. One of two things needs to happen. You can sole source in the community, but then the promise of bringing so low a price wholesale that the competitors like SSI, Nunanet Worldwide, Sakku, KidCorp, they could compete in the community with serving the rest of the market. And go back and look at Northwest Tel's promises never to get into internet. That was going to be something that they didn't do, which is why they asked for service provider support when Artacom came along. But that was a done deal long before it was approved. So, yes, it's possible. No, there's no security concerns, or there can be. You can't have 15 different phone providers providing you phone numbers from different pools and different calling exchanges, but you can certainly provide access to a bunch more of the tenders that are not being tendered right now. And I'll end with this. We bid every four years for 12 years on the government's wide-area network contract. We quit bidding maybe a decade ago. We didn't win it once based on merit. We didn't lose it once based on merit. We lost it on the size of the company, the number of engineers, or the fact that they just needed a competitive bid to keep Northwest Tel honest. I quit bidding on it at that point, and we started working around the world because we couldn't get any work at home. So yeah, there's an opportunity. Come call us. Come ask us. I was blown away to see 10 million might go to Northwest Tel to bring cellular down to Bay Choco. That's a joke. But I digress.
Let's see, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Phillips, for that. I, I guess, long-term, I, I want to get your sense of what you think the best ownership model is. When I look at the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link GNWT-owned, and the service providers I've provided say, you know, they don't have issues with that. They have issues accessing Northwest Tel-owned infrastructure. And the path I see us going down is more public money to build Northwest Tel infrastructure that they own, and then people can't get access to. So i- i- in your mind, is the, the long-term solution that Northwest Tel just is forced to provide wholesale access to all of its infrastructure, or should we, as GNWTE, be building more infrastructure similar to how we built the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Johnson, you and I are going to become very good friends. You keep asking me these really good questions because frankly, you probably, let me give you a little sign. If you want to ever just stop me, just wave your hands in the air and I'll just stop because I don't want to get into too big of a rant, but the reality is, we bid the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link project. We understand the problems with the MVFL. I was, I received a phone call not that long ago from somebody in government asking me whether or not I could help them understand, sorry, turn my music off, the fact as to why we didn't have better connectivity along the MVFL. And my answer to them was, it's very simple. We don't have better connectivity because when the MVFL was built, we didn't, we didn't pay attention to a few things that we should have, and that is things like ensuring that we had open gateways that everyone could use, where you could put your infrastructure into that gateway, because if you don't have an open gateway. Sorry, guys, I'm just gonna, I don't know if you can hear that or not, but it's bugging me in the background. My CBC kicks in automatically at 3, so don't miss it. So if you don't have open gateways, you can't have somebody come in without building their own building, and if you don't have a tower. So there's certain pieces of infrastructure that were left out of the MVFL, that we brought fiber all the way to Anuvik. We didn't make it quite all the way to Tuck, but we did bring it to Anuvik, but we brought it into somebody else's building. We didn't put a tower next to that building. We didn't ensure that there was enough space in that building for a competitor. So there's just no way to have competition because for us to move into those markets now is a million dollar per community. And frankly, you have a P3 which would have been fine, could have been fine, could have ended up with the infrastructure. But we said in meeting two in Vancouver that you should be adding an open gateway because whether we lose it or win it, the competitor will have access to be able to come in and compete with us in this market, and when your 20-year or 10-year management contract is up, I'm not telling you to get your fiber out of my building. So yeah, I think there were some mistakes made, and I think that would have improved competition. Do I think that the government should own the infrastructure or Northwest Tel should? I think that the infrastructure funding should be a little bit more transparent. I think that the problem that we face as competitors trying to bid against Northwest Tel is that the game is cooked or rigged long before the bids are in, in most cases. And I'm not saying this because it's, it's rigged in a, in a, in a, in a negative way. I'm saying that, you know, as I said in the comments earlier, it's perhaps because the CRTC doesn't believe competition could come along because they've not been here to see that we're there. Right? It's perhaps because the GNWT doesn't realize the breadth and scope of our expertise that they don't call to ask how to get fiber somewhere or, or cellular somewhere. So we've not done a good job of lobbying either. So I would say it's a complicated question. I do not believe it's a matter of the government owning it, frankly. That, to me, is not the right answer. The answer is that the backbone, the backbone infrastructure and critical open gateways, and that backbone can be satellite, can be fiber, could be low Earth orbit, it shouldn't matter. The backbone infrastructure and the open gateways need to be regulated so that no one provider has a head start, no one provider has an exclusivity, no one provider has pricing that the other provider doesn't get. And last and most critical, and I'll say this about Wholesale Connect, the reason that Wholesale Connect, which we lobbied for years and spent millions of dollars getting put in place for all competitors, not just for us, for all competitors. The reason it doesn't work is that, A, the pricing's too high. That's an obvious. We're all used to a northern premium, but maybe not as high a hundreds of percent as, as is experienced on fiber. But it's because there's no quality of service and no guarantee. So if it fails, if it doesn't work, if there's too much buffer, our customers suffer that because we have no guarantee of any quality of service. There's no credit if it fails. So regulating and overseeing Northwest Tel's provision, or anybody's, our own provision of a backbone is critical for competition to survive. And I believe that it has not been done well enough. The regulatory oversight has not been quick enough. And, you know, as witnessed recently when Northwest Tel was approved for unlimited usage, and rah rah, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I mean, I'm not a Northwest Tel customer in Yellowknife, but if I was, I'd be overjoyed. And I'm happy that all those customers get unlimited. Frankly, they should have got, they should have got a better service some time ago. I want that for our customers. I want that for Arctech's customers. I want that for Keplotek's customers. I want that for Tom's customers in, in Anuvik because it's not fair, and it has to be fixed. So regulatory oversight, it's not a government-owned thing. It's Northwest Tel shouldn't be given all the money. And if you look at all the money in infrastructure given out in the last year, you go back and look at all the funding given out. Bell has received the majority of that funding across the country, and it's, they have the largest number of lobbyists as well. So anyway, I'm looking at Mr. Bonner, so I can't tell if you're waving your arms in the air or not for me to stop, so I'll just stop there.
Let's see, Mr. Phillips, Ms. Knocby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Philip. I found it really interesting and does seem very basic. Coming from the private sector, I'm a firm believer in competition. I'm also a firm believer in promoting indigenous and northern businesses, so I like everything that you're saying. And I think, yeah, just more of a comment that, you know, I think this is a really complex situation, so I'm actually going to take you up on your offer to reach out to you and have a bit more of a one-on-one conversation, and I would like to see the two filings that have been filed by your company. Thank you.
Let's see. Ms. Knocby, Mr. Phillips, anything to comment on that one?
Thank you. I would be happy at any point with anyone, frankly, to share anything we can. This is not about us. It's not about SSI. This never was and shouldn't be. This is about competition in the north, and I firmly believe that. If the service and the job is done, we won't be there fighting over it, right? I'm happy to solve energy problems. So, and yes, we will absolutely, Dean and some of my staff are watching remotely across the country. Hi, folks. I hope I haven't embarrassed the family too badly today. But we will get those comments out to you, what we filed today.
Let's see, Mr. Phillips, follow-up, Ms. Knocby? Now, fine, Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the, the presentation. So I guess if you recommend that GNWT break up its contracting when it comes to telecom services, what advice or guidance would you give us as a committee in terms of how to break it up? Is there particular services or parts of it? Should there be? Part of it goes to what, on the market, or sorry, through an RFP or a tender process and another part? Anyways, any advice in terms of how to break up the, the, how we do the services would be really helpful for me. I don't understand a lot of this stuff, but if you can give us some advice or suggestions on how to break it up, I think that would be really helpful for us moving forward. Thanks.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Philip?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. O'Reilly, and it's Jeff, by the way, anyone, you don't actually have to call me Mr. Philip. I'm not that, not that important. Mr. O'Reilly, Kevin, I think that's a really good question, and it's probably not as simple as me just saying, wow, you could do this, this, and this. I think there's some low-hanging fruit, and I always believe that's the easiest thing, right? What is the stuff that can be done the easiest? And then I would say that the answer to your question is really to crowdsource that. I would, as a committee even, or as the government, go back out to, you know, as a public RFP and say, hey, any, any service providers out there? Right? What would you consider in your local market or in the greater territorial market to be a, a smart thing for us to do? Because frankly, Tom in, in Anuvik's got a whole bunch of ideas. James Locke and Hay River's got a whole bunch of ideas, and we're not in those two markets, so I can't really answer for their markets, and I think this is about all competitors in the north, not, not us. Keplotek. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know their plan greatly. I should, I should know it better. But I mean, they've been talking about fiber to the south, and, you know, while I don't know that, that we should necessarily invest in redundant infrastructure when we already have it, and we could regulate it so that, so that, you know, they can get access to it at a fair price. So I think there is some low-hanging fruit, and I'll, I'll give you a few examples. And they are not immediately available to us to even bid on. I would love to see an RFP for the government's internet connectivity, for the GNWT to say, hey, look, here's what our internet WAN requirements in each of these communities of the Northwest Territories is. We need five megabit guaranteed bursting to 50, or whatever number that is. Because if you broke it out, then people in each community could, could improve their, their business locally by having that contract. Tom would love to bid on your contract in Anuvik, and Tom... Tom would love to bid on your contract in Inuvik and Tom buys a lot of capacity and he could merge your daytime traffic with his nighttime traffic and provide you a better service than you can potentially buy on your own unless you sole source it, which does nothing for competition. So individual market opportunities, things like Backbone are one because as was asked earlier, right, is there a security issue with the Backbone? No. And guess what? We're all going to use the same Backbone, the same one you're on right now. It's just you're going to help us improve our business case. We're going to offer you a real great discount. We're going to increase our purchase. It's going to benefit all the consumers in the community that we service. It might not benefit Northwest Tel because they're going to have competitors in the market. This is the way it used to be before Articom's great big deal came along. Wow, that's a whole nother story. But, so I think that's a simple thing to do, to say, hey, here's the, oh, and then, sorry, for that to be viable, for us to be able to bid on that, we need to ensure that the wholesale pricing that we pay is the same as what Northwest Tel pays. Meaning they're running over a publicly funded Backbone with a $22 million a year subsidy for copper phone lines into homes. That goes on for one more year, $22 million a year for copper phone lines. So I would suggest, and that subsidy, we didn't even argue about that. It's like, great, let them keep that for another year, as ridiculous as that is. When have we ever used dial-up in the last decade? But let's say they've got that, but it's going to end in a year, which they're deathly afraid of. I guarantee you, sorry, Northwest Tel, lots of great people at Northwest Tel, don't get me wrong. Northwest Tel as a company has a whole bunch of really good, hardworking people. It just has a mandate given to them by Bell that does not necessarily agree with my northern heritage. So you have to support competitors to get fair access to the Backbone. Now, that's, somebody's going to say, well, that's very complicated. What's fair access? I'll give you a simple measure. What's the northern premium, Kevin? For groceries, 30%, 35, 20, booze, you know, our pot, we know what the premium is on our cannabis, we know what our premium on alcohol is, we know what it is on food, on housing, on gas, on, on flights, and we fight for it, right? We go to bat when that price is ridiculous. We threaten to regulate the gas stations or hold a study into the price of gas when it goes up to a buck 20 a liter. But nobody seems to care that the wholesale price of broadband over a publicly funded network is hundreds of percent higher than it is in Ottawa. And don't get me wrong, we buy bandwidth from Bell in Ottawa, in Toronto, in Lethbridge, in High Level, I mean, across the country, into EU Stitchney Territory and James Bay. We don't pay a fraction of what we pay to bring it into Yellowknife. The reason that our data center is in Ottawa with 40 staff and big satellite dishes pointing up in the sky to bring ones and zeros into None of it is because it was too damn expensive to truck them all the way up to Yellowknife over the fiber network and fire them up onto the same satellite. So we built a multi-million dollar facility, which now is 40 people, 40, some people in it in Ottawa. This is a loss to the NWT. This is a loss to the economy, to jobs. We have 30 people in Yellowknife now and frankly, I'm not sure why, because with the new unlimited plan, anyone from Yellowknife that's an SSI customer listening, rush to Bell and buy this new service or Northwest Tel, because frankly, we don't have unlimited and it doesn't look like we're getting it anytime soon. And why the hell would you stay with us if we couldn't offer you that? Doesn't matter. We don't have, we don't have customers in Ottawa, yet we have 40 people there. We don't need customers here. We have a family of staff here and we're not going to leave. And we're down the road in Providence working on energy projects and housing and food because those are almost more important than telecom to me today. So there are simple ways, I'm sorry, just raise your hand and tell me to be quiet, I'll hit the microphone. Mr. Chair, Mr. Bonner, as you know damn well that you can mute me anytime you want.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Philip. Is there a follow-up, Mr. O'Reilly? Mr. Jacobson, did you have a question?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my last question is, is understanding how the last mile, how you picture that being built. Because right now, we, we, let's talk Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link. We, we built the lot thing, but there's, there's a million dollars, you say, or, you know, millions of dollars of infrastructure to actually get it to people's homes. And I, how does this work in other jurisdictions? When I look at the Alberta system, did they build right to people's homes? Did the, did the government do that? Or would, would SSI be, be able to do that? I mean, you'd, you'd have to get millions of dollars in funding. Can you just explain to me the, the logistics of connecting the last mile? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson.
Another excellent question, right? Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I swear somebody in my office has been feeding you questions because these are all excellent. Um, let me just talk about Alberta first, the, uh, the, um, uh, what do they call that? Supernet. Supernet sounded like a great idea, um, and it failed for the same reason the MVFL is failing. They spent a lot of money to build fiber to connect all of these communities and 15 years ago, I don't know, I'm bad with time, a long time ago, we went to, we wanted to go to Red Deer. We wanted to expand our network into Red Deer because there was really no good services and we could bring our wireless technology. We were brand new in Canada, we had license to do it. In fact, we were partnered with, uh, with FIDO, which is the Microsoft guys, which is now Rogers, purchased by Rogers. Uh, we're going to go to Red Deer. So we, we got somebody on it. Hey, they got Supernet, they've got fiber, so this should be easy. It's cheap, it's great. Turns out, the fiber went to a little data center that was just outside of town on the other side of the tracks and, uh, so we phoned them up and said, well, how do we get from your building to, to where we're going to go? And do you have a tower we could put some equipment on? Could we co-locate in your building where the fiber ends? Oh, no, 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 it's, it's our building, you can't co-, you have to go from here to wherever your building is. Well, we don't have one. We'd love to come into that market. Okay, well then we'll find a building. So we find a building that we can lease on a long-term lease where we're going to put up a little tower on the roof and we're going to put fiber from there to the, oh, no, you can't go under the train tracks to get to our building in Supernet's building, so you couldn't tunnel under the tracks. So could we put a pipe on the side of your building so we do a wireless link from you to our building? No, you can't do that either. So we just walked away from Red Deer because frankly, there was no way to connect the Supernet. MVFL, great fiber run all the way up. There were a few big mistakes, but let's just say they're all water under the bridge or fiber hanging over the creek. But now we got that thing running all the way up to, uh, Inuvik. But for SSI to go in, and I'll get to your last mile question here, what would we have to do? Well, we'd have to, we'd have to ask Northwest Tel if they have room. I brought that up a few years ago in the third meeting on the MVFL. No, they didn't have room. Well, we didn't have room in our buildings either when we were bidding this, so we suggested that the government should have a building as part of this RFP because it's very small cost to put a building in when you're building that much fiber. Uh, but that was rejected as being outside the scope of the RFP. So we'd have to put a building in, we'd have to put a tower in, and any other competitor would have to put a building and a tower in. And you know what the funny thing about cellular is? We all want to put our tower in roughly the same spot, the highest little hill in town. And so there's not a lot of ways you can fight over that little hill. So you got to go into a secondary location and then you get, kind of like Yellowknife, all these little wee pokey towers sticking up because they're one foot under the regulatory requirements for public consultation. You'll see them in Northwest Tel's yard in Cam Lake, you'll see them on Old Airport Road, you'll see them behind CBC because you don't have to consult with the public about where you put those up and you don't have to worry about letting anyone else onto your tower because they're so small, you can't use them. So what should have happened? We should have, and I've suggested this to the Town in Hay River, I've suggested it to the mayor here years ago, why wouldn't the city say, you know what, we're going to build some infrastructure? We're going to build a fiber municipal area network, we're going to build some open gateways, we're going to put towers beside them, and we're going to own that last mile open gateway. Now, just because the radio equipment that I want to put on the tower, the license I need to compete, those things are things that if you want to be a cellular provider, you got to buy those. And the last mile's not a problem anymore. See, it used to be, and in the south, all the big telcos, it's, it's a complete reversal. In, let's say in Vancouver, Toronto's a good example. There's a, there's no real big cost to putting fiber from Toronto to Vancouver. That for a company like Bell is a very small cost. The cost is getting onto every rooftop downtown Toronto to put a little wee antenna to cover the blanket with 5G, a fiber, the last mile's a real pain. And so everyone says, oh, we don't need money on the Backbone, we need money for the last mile. It's completely the opposite in rural Canada. The Backbone, satellite, huge cost, bring fiber to 25 communities in None of it, ridiculous cost. So the Backbone is the cost, the open gateway is the cost, the backup generator, the tower, those shared infrastructure points. And in our model, you can go and look at kimiruk.com, K-I-M-I-R-L-U-K dot C-A-R dot com, really means, Kimiruk actually means Wales Backbone in Inuktitut, but you might remember it as Kimiruk. But Kimiruk explains what open gateways are all about. We proposed this three years ago in None of it and we said, look, whoever wins this is going to be running an open gateway and we don't care who wins it because if they follow this, we'll be a competitor in that market. We'll go into that building, we'll use that tower, we'll use their local staff, we'll use the local backup gen set. We don't need to build all that ourselves. We want to offer the service to the consumer. We don't care about the Backbone if the Backbone is regulated. And therein lie the crux, right? So the last mile, to your point, the electronics for last mile, the service to run the last mile, that's not a problem at all. Any, any service provider should be able to carry that themselves. And the building, the tower, the access to the Backbone, and here's another spin-off benefit, if you have one building connected to fiber with a tower, with locally trained folks, the human resources side of this thing, the local job side of this thing, able to climb that tower, able to re-point addition, None of it, able to rack and stack electronics, I don't even need to send somebody in there. When I want to be, or a better example, I want to be the gamer, that kid that puts up a Minecraft server for all of his friends. Where's it going to go? It's got to go in that local open gateway because I can't run it at home on my residential internet. I want to put it in for 40 bucks a month and I want to run that service. So open gateway and tower with connection to the fiber Backbone means every service provider will go in and compete without the big upfront expense of the Backbone. There's no moat or no barrier to entry for a service provider if the playing field is fair and the bandwidth is affordable. So that's what needs to happen. It's not the last mile, it's the Backbone components that need to be invested in and regulated and open.
Let's see, Mr. Philip, uh, any follow-up questions anymore? One more, Mr. Johnson?
One more question. Thank you for that, Jeff. I guess my last question is in regards to the, your submissions. I look forward to reading them to the CRTC. Um, I, I just want to clarify my understanding of this. Essentially Northwest Tel is applying to have unlimited data packages off of all of the infrastructure they already own. And in their submissions, is there any change to the wholesale current agreement? So essentially, what you are asking is that if the CRTC is going to allow them to offer unlimited packages on there, there has to be a change to the wholesale price. And, and can you just, I, I have no sense of what the current wholesale cost price that Northwest Tel charges competitors is? And can you give me a better sense of how much it is inflated? You, you named a, you know, a couple hundred percent there, but what level do you think that should come to? And when, so I can have an understanding of what we should submit to the CRTC. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Philip?
Um, certainly a good question. So I will actually, um, probably reply offline so that I'm not broadcasting. I think what it's probably a, there's probably, I'm certain, a term on our agreement with Northwest Tel that says that we shouldn't be publicly steering that out. Uh, but I am happy to tell you that it's far higher than any northern premium anybody would be willing to pay. And here's a better measurement of the cost. And I, I would have to ask the regulatory folks on our team to give you the details of this, but in a not-that-long-ago filing, I believe that Northwest Tel stated that they have, their, their broadband, this level of service before unlimited was already priced below their, their cost floor, meaning at a loss. Now, that assumes they're using the same input cost, right? It assumes they're using the cost that I would pay and they're saying they're at a loss. And now with the $62 million investment they get with the feds, they're allowed to offer unlimited? Well, I don't understand how that's possible if you're already at a loss. And if the wholesale price, which is already unable to sell that retail service, this is anti-competitive at the very least, right? The, I mean, the competition bureau should be stepping in to say, no, 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 Mr. CRTC. And they've already approved this, right? They're already doing this. So it's not a matter of if they approve it, they've approved it. So unlimited is there. Northwest Tel is offering this service now where they can. And frankly, somebody in Whitehorse just sent me a link to their speed test and it's, it's a fraction of what it is promoted to be, but anyway, they're offering it. So yes, the wholesale price has not come down at all. So there's no possible way we can offer our consumers an improved price. There's no possible way that the, why doesn't the government of Northwest Territories wholesale rate improve when Northwest Tel gets a $62 million contribution? Why doesn't the other competitor's wholesale rate improve? And first and foremost, shouldn't our wholesale rate be low enough that we could compete on that service and still have our markup, still have our overhead, still have our marketing, our customer service and everything else covered? The fact that they sell it below their own input cost with none of those other factors in is ludicrous. So yes, the price has to come down and we would, we would thank you for your support. But let me also point out why TPIA is so expensive in this context. TPIA is typically marketed, and, and just to make sure everyone understands what that is, Northwest Tel owns the cable network here. They were allowed to do that after actually much fighting. And in fact, um, Mr. Bonner will remember when Northwest Tel Cable offered to put cable into all the communities on the road system as part of their agreement to be given the opportunity, the monopoly on cable in Yellowknife. We were in TV in Providence. We got knocked out of TV in Providence because Northwest Tel put it in a year later and then took it out a year after that because they couldn't afford to run it, which means most people don't have TV unless you can afford Bell Express view. So they played a real game there. But the point is this, in Yellowknife, they own the cable network, they own the fiber Backbone, they set a price, let's say it's 100 bucks. Maybe my cost to buy the raw bandwidth is 120. It's impossible. So TPIA would allow me, would force them to sell me that 100-dollar package retail minus, meaning if it's 100 retail, maybe I get it for 70. 30% off is, is fairly standard, which that means that I can then say to all of the customers in Yellowknife, hey, if you're currently on Northwest Tel cable and you're not very happy with it, we've got a price for you. Use the same cable modem, just come on over, sign up over here, you can have our customer service, you can have our bundling with mobile, you can have all these other things, and it'll be cheaper because Northwest Tel would be forced to sell it to us at retail minus, which would also obviously stop their gaming. Because if they're selling it at below cost and they have to give it to us for 30% less, and it's not just us, it's every competitor. So I would say two things. Regulate the wholesale rate so if we don't want to use their last mile, we want to build our own, we can compete. And force them to enable TPIA because it will keep the gaming and the regulatory gaming to a minimum going forward because they're going to have to sell it to others at a loss if they want to game the system. I hope that was clear.
Yeah, must see for that, Mr. Philip. Thank you very much for your presentation today regarding telecommunications challenges in the Northwest Territories. Committee, thanks you for all your comments and look forward to more rapport with you. Now, well, that committee will now take a short break to get our next presenter on the call. Let's see.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the time.
Welcome back, committee. As noted earlier, the standing committee is hearing from key players in telecommunications in the North. This is to give committee an understanding of what is currently happening across the Northwest Territories in the private telecommunications sector. Committee is now going to hear from New North Networks, Mr. Tom Zupko. I would ask committee members to please introduce themselves. We'll start on the left.
Katrina Nakleby, MLA for Great Slave.
Alan Johnson, MLA for Yellowknife, North.
Kevin O'Reilly, FrameLink.
And the staff, you know, Glenn.
Good.
Jacobson.
Yeah, Jackie Jacobson, Emily in the network.
Glenn Rutland, committee clerk.
Amy Lazott, committee advisor.
James Thomas, committee clerk.
I see to the committee. I'll now invite the presenter to introduce himself and to proceed with any opening remarks or presentations he may have. I see.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. First, for the invitation to appear before you. And, and thank you for taking the time to delve into this, what I consider to be a fairly important subject. I would have a few notes here that I would like to share with you. As I've noted in the past, in nineteen ninety-six, there was an excess of twenty internet providers in Northern Canada. Since then, Bell Canada has become the predominant internet provider and has done so by way of hundreds of millions of dollars in subsidies and grants from the federal government and unfettered support by the territorial governments to grant subsidies and a policy that predicates the use of Bell Canada companies to the exclusion of Northern-owned companies. You are also aware that SSI Micro has been arguing for years that the structure of subsidies, grants and tariff construction is by design anti-competitive. Surprisingly, it was the government of Northwest Territories who recognized the fundamentals required to foster real competition when they set out their own tariffs for the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Line. It is somewhat perplexing that the same government has not seen fit to argue that these fundamentals should be extended to the regulatory and fiscal support regime that would bring real change to the majority of NWT. Well, committee after committee examines the issue of competition, the government has really never stepped in behind the locally owned companies that are in the business to argue for the changes needed to truly foster competition so Northern-owned companies can in fact exist. We call all this eat your children. So quite frankly, what we have now can only be seen as platitudes with very little chance of significant change on the part of government. However, you did ask for my opinion. So to be clear about the definitions used herein, transport is defined as the connection from the south to the north and between communities in the north. This connection is either fiber or microwave and normally would be available for, for competing companies to purchase on a wholesale basis. Distribution is defined as the portion of the system that connects the transport end to the end user and would typically be contained within a community or geographic area. My recommendations or suggestions for your consideration are as follows. GNWT should support the arguments that SSI and others have been making for years that the tariff structure in their whole for Northwest Tel is fundamentally flawed. The argument in this extreme is if you make enough money from transport of the services from Southern Canada, you do not need to make any money on a local distribution basis and competition cannot exist. You need to ask yourself these two questions. If you were in the transport business for data, how many companies do you want to sell your transport services to? On the other hand, if you're in the retail business, how many companies do you want to sell your transport services to? GNWT should take the position that transport services should be specifically subsidized so that competition can actually be profitable on the distribution side where you want competition to be. GNWT should work closely with Northern companies such as Catla Tech to develop competition in the transport segment of the telecom industry rather than blindly supporting Bell Canada. In fact, if you truly want competition, you would prohibit Bell companies from participating in any RFP for the transport segment. This would get a lot of blowback, but such moves are not unprecedented. It would take a great deal of intestinal fortitude to go down this path and prevail. To be clear, just another committee recommendation with no forceful adoption by the government as a whole will leave the NWT in the same position tomorrow as it is today. The internet is a fast-moving industry. Usage in normal times has been increasing at fifty percent per year. If you look at the decisions made by the CRTC as the impact the North, you will see that all the money put into the latest round of funding will leave the rates in those communities at an unaffordable rate and allow usage at a completely unacceptable level. Based on annual increases noted above, the demand will be a full twenty-five times what it is today in eight years when their projects are finished. This means you will be added, you will be asked to further subsidize the provision of internet in the near future or to further allow abandonment of the people's needs for data. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
I see, Mr. Zupko. I'll now open the floor for any questions, comments from committee. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Zupko, for your presentation. One of the issues I've been struggling with in trying to come to submissions about this is whenever I ask about the wholesale rates, either that Northwest Tel charges or the GNWT, I run into this weird confidentiality issue and then no one seems to really want to talk about them. So I was just, you spoke about the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link being a fair wholesale rate that allows competitors, you know, such as yourself in Anuvik at the end of it. Can you just give me a sense of what GNWT is charging for access to fiber versus Northwest Tel? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Zupko.
I can tell you that we are paying one one-hundredth of the amount that we used to pay Northwest Tel for the bandwidth that we are getting today.
I see, Mr. Zupko, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I, I think that is probably the most important fact I have heard today, that Northwest Tel's wholesale rate is just completely unjustified. I guess my, my next question is, to what extent can the GNWT's wholesale rate be lowered even further? And can you give me a bit of a sense of how we as a government came to charge that rate? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Zupko.
I can give you some indication of why the rates were set the way they were. When MBFL was being contemplated, there was a recognition by the government that such an investment would require affordable rates to be presented to people that were near the MBFL. And they did quite a lot of consultation. They set a base mark that they wanted to see rates come to somewhere within twenty percent of the prevailing rates in Southern Canada and wanted to understand what it would take in terms of wholesale rates for, for that kind of a situation to, in fact, come out at the other end.
I see, Mr. Zupko, follow-up.
Yeah, thank you. Can, I guess, I asked this question to Jeff from SSI as well on what he kind of views to the solutions here. Obviously, the wholesale rate being one of them. But, but I guess I want to get to the debate of whether this should be publicly owned infrastructure or privately owned infrastructure with a wholesale rate that allows competition. The Mackenzie Valley Fiber Link being an example of publicly owned infrastructure and the rest of it is pretty much all Northwest Tel. So, you know, giving Northwest Tel another sixty million dollars or Bell or whatever parent company to, to build this infrastructure, which they'll own, I, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me. It seems to make more sense to me that it actually is publicly owned infrastructure. But can you speak to how you think the future of the ownership of infrastructure should look in the North? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I see, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Zupko.
Well, there are options, obviously, for how you do this, but one of the concerns I think that needs to be looked at very, very carefully is the vertical integration of the, of the various facilities that make up an internet provision at the end of the day. Right now, you have, and I alluded to this in my, in my opening statement, if you're a company that has both wholesale and retail facilities, I would suggest that your interests are going to lie in maximizing your, your return throughout the system. And, and it's also would be to try and keep competition from, from being able to take a foothold. Now, it's SSI's opinion, and I'm sure Jeff filled you in on more details, but that the cost of wholesale rates has been heavily weighted in the overall picture. And that means that I, well, I had to pay one hundred times what we're paying to MBFL now. I can tell you that I got into internet before anybody else in Anuvik. We, I think it's also fair to say, we probably never made a single penny over the term of twenty years of providing internet service. I guess we did it for strategic reasons and because we're more stubborn than smart, perhaps. But paying the kind of rates that were, that were required to Northwest Tel simply took all of the money. At the same time, Northwest Tel was getting subsidies to build infrastructure, to provide telephone service. They were getting twice as much money as they were collecting to provide telephone service on average across the North. Those, those subsidies went directly to them, did not go to anybody else. In my opinion, putting that money into the wholesale side of the infrastructure as a subsidy and requiring rates that were way lower in terms of wholesale would in fact create competition or competitive environment for people to look at and, and move into.
I see, Mr. Zupko.
If, if I might just a little bit more, I spoke about the vertical integration and I, and I spoke earlier about the two questions, fundamental questions. If a fiber company existed who did not do retail, who, whose revenues came from the attracting various companies to buy their services, they would be out shopping around trying to find customers to sell their services to. That's not the situation you have today. Today, you have an integrated company, vertically integrated company that supplies internet themselves predominantly on a tariff structure that, that makes competition very, very difficult.
I see, Mr. Zupko. I have Mr. Jacobson on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming today, Tom and Rip, presenting to the committee. I just got a couple of questions. First comment, I just want to, you know, thank you for the internet service you provided during this COVID-nineteen to the students up in Anuvik for free. And then how hard would it be to get, I guess, you into the communities of my coastal communities, Tuk, Back, Pol, Tuk, and Uluk Tuk to provide service there? How, like, what, what would that take to happen? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Zupko.
Well, the biggest problem that we have in trying to look at expanding into other communities, quite frankly, is Northwest Tel, the CRTC, and the territorial government. We have, it's been amply demonstrated to us in the past that we can do all sorts of wonderful things, bring in technologies before anybody else, and the net result is that when Bell moves in, all of the governments and a good number of other people move to that service. I'll give you one little example. When we put cell service into Anuvik, digital cell service, three years before Northwest Tel did, we did it primarily because they determined in their minds that there was no future in self for small community like Anuvik. They did, a couple of years down the road, decide that maybe they were wrong because we were doing a pretty good business. Within 30 days of them starting their service, every single cellphone that the government had rented from us was back on our table and all of the services were canceled, all of the subscriptions were canceled. So it's great to be first, but when you're met with that kind of response from government over, you know, year after year after year, you actually have to be pretty dumb to try and go out and do stuff unless the groundwork has changed. And quite frankly, right now, it hasn't changed with the exception of what's happened with the MBFL.
Let's see, Mr. Zupko, follow up, Jackie, Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, this in regards to, I guess you could say that we're done and this is now, and we're looking for different options, I guess, for my writing, if they're not put in, trying to provide service and with the high cost that we are getting right now through Northwest Tel. And it's unacceptable and we have to, I guess, open it up to competition and in any way I mean to try to lower the cost for my constituents and because right now with the COVID-19 pandemic going on right now, people tend to be more on the internet service and using more data. So is there any, like, looking at different possibilities to make it a lot cheaper and somewhat in the cases there? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Zupko.
Well, like I indicated, Mr. Jacobson, the groundwork, the playing field is not very level these days. You know that Northwest Tel and TeleSat have been given significant amounts of government money to try and improve services. I don't see the rates being pinned down to where they need to be. As I indicated in my opening statements, you know, internet usage in normal years is going up 50% a year. It seems to me that governments throughout the country are looking at today and not looking at tomorrow when they set their benchmarks. And they really don't seem to truly make the investments that need to be made. I may have mentioned this the last time I spoke to you. A year and a half ago, I was in Australia. We landed in Darwin, which is, you know, far north and the biggest community in a very, very large part of the country. We walked into the cell store there and bought a plan for internet for a month, pardon me, for cellphone service for a month. It was unlimited internet. It was free calling anywhere in Australia, North America, parts of Europe, and some other parts of the world. It costs $60 a month. Ironically, that evening, I got an email from Rogers saying, hey, we've got a great special on for you. We'll sell you 10 gigabytes on top of the plan that you're now paying, which was about $85 a month, and we'll only charge you $60. So Canada has not done a very good job compared to places such as Australia and other countries around the world. And I would also mention that, you know, the challenges that we see in the north are not unlike the challenges that Australia sees in a very large amount of their country.
Let's see, Mr. Zupko, Ms. Nocoby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By virtue of going last for us here today, Mr. Zupko, I don't actually have a lot of questions either for you, but I did want to also echo my colleagues' thank you to you and your company for providing the internet up in Anuvik there. One thing that really struck me as COVID progressed was the have and have not of our territory and how education is playing into that and how we're going to be in this situation for a while, so I just wanted to add my thanks. And then just as well say kudos to you for continuing on and persevering through all of this from what sounds like a really frustrating time. And as I said earlier to one of your colleagues there, you know, I'm a firm believer in competition. I think that that's the only way we're going to get good service, and so I just wanted to say that I appreciate your struggle and your fight on this. So thank you, more of a comment than anything.
Let's see for that comment, Ms. Nocoby, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Tom, for presenting to us today. One of the issues that Mr. Philip identified in a previous presentation was the need for GNWT to contract or changes to the way that it contracts for telecommunications services and that it should really break them up. And I guess you experienced a little bit of that when you said 300 phones were turned in very quickly in Anuvik. But any suggestions, advice on how GNWT might better use its ability as a telecoms service purchaser to help foster more competition? Thanks.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Zupko.
Well, it's a difficult question. You're asking me basically, how do you change the mindset of your entire bureaucracy? And I'm not sure that I'm the right person to ask that question.
Let's see, Mr. Zupko, follow up, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks. Well, let's just say that we actually had folks that do procurement that were willing to break up the contract in some way. Is there some way in which you think part of it might be for one type of service or another type of service or put a cap on, you know, what do, I don't even know anything about procurement, so. But I'm sure you might have some suggestions or advice on, you know, is it would, you know, splitting off cellphone service or contracting internet service provider or services in certain regions? What could we do to help foster more competition and support local service providers? I guess, any advice or suggestions I think would be helpful. Thanks.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Zupko.
Well, I guess there is, you know, a number of ideas out there. You could, for example, determine that if there is competition that the services purchased by GNWT are split amongst those. But even further, you know, our government, you guys spend millions and millions of dollars and talk about competition, talk about northern development, developing northern companies. I think it would be fair to suggest that if you really do believe in those ideas and those goals, that perhaps you should be dictating to the bureaucracy that they, in fact, were available, spend more on the local companies than they do on a Bell Canada Corporation.
Let's see, Mr. Zupko, Mr. O'Reilly.
Thanks. No, I think that's helpful, some helpful suggestions and advice there. So I guess, being in Anuvik, having visited the satellite stations there, I think I have a much better understanding of what those have done in terms of spurring local economic development. Is there room for more than one place in the Northwest Territories to get those kinds of benefits from data centers? And, you know, we had a presentation for Mr. Fabian earlier, I think, about data centers. But, you know, I see some of the benefits this has brought to Anuvik. What else can and should GNWT be doing to help encourage that kind of development perhaps in other centers without taking away from what Anuvik already has going? Thanks.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Mr. Zupko.
So the effort that's been put into the ground station, satellite ground stations in Anuvik, I think probably the first thing that needs to be understood is that we started this process in 2007, so we're 13 years from when we started this to where we are today. So whatever you determine needs to be done, you have to think about it in terms, you know, of that kind of a timeframe. These things do not happen tomorrow. As far as building similar facilities in other places or expanding them, there are But I will tell you that one of the biggest challenges for getting the Anuvik ground station businesses underway was communication. It became abundantly clear to us very shortly after we got involved with the people looking at this kind of development that if we didn't have fiber in Anuvik, we would not have a very robust ground station business. And fortunately, we had people in Yellowknife at the time that actually took the time and went out and looked to see what had been done in other parts of the world and gained an understanding of what it was going to take to actually make ground stations work in northern Canada. And, you know, that resulted in the Mackenzie Valley Fiber Line. So do you need to do these kinds of things? Well, you need vision, you need understanding, you need determination to put the infrastructure that's required to allow these kinds of developments to move ahead.
Let's see, Mr. Zupko. Any further questions from committee? Seeing none. Seeing none, this will conclude our portion of the committee meeting. I'd like to thank Mr. Zupko for joining us today and his insights into telecommunications in the Northwest Territories. Mr. Zupko, just give you, if you have any last remarks for committee before we close.
No, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I hope that you get some benefit out of my rambling. And also, I would just like to extend to you, as always, an invitation to Anuvik to come see my facilities, come see the ground station facilities that we've built here. And yeah, be happy to host you on any of that kind of information and act as your tour guide.
Let's see for that. Clerk, did you hear that invitation? All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Zupko.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Okay, this concludes the public portion of our meeting. We need a motion to go in camera, second part of our meeting, moved by M.L.A. Motion is in order, all those in favor. It's passed. We will now go in camera, we will disconnect, live stream, and take a five-minute break. Let's see.